I want to call the meeting to order. I want to thank you for joining us this evening. This is a regularly scheduled Greer City Council meeting called and convened this evening, July 14, 2020. Having called the meeting to order and being duly assembled, I'm going to ask Councilmember Wayne Griffin if he will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and then an invocation for council. You can stand if you'd like to join us.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Eternal God, our heavenly Father, Father God, I want to thank you for another beautiful day, Father God. Thank you for a portion of life, health, and strength. Father, if you would, come and join us in this meeting. Teach us to lean not unto our own understanding, but in all thy ways acknowledge you, and you shall direct our paths. Father, these are all the blessings we have. In the precious name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
For those of you that are joining us for the first time, or maybe not your first time, we welcome you this evening. The council agenda is set and advertised on Friday afternoons in regards to the way our meetings are going to be conducted, and it gives us an overview of the items that we're going to be dealing with tonight. I do think that it is worth an explanation tonight that this meeting is going to be lengthy. This is not a typical meeting for us, indicative of the fact that there is a lot going on in Greer right now, and this council is called to consider all of those matters, and so we do that in as timely a fashion as we possibly can. The first part of the meeting is perfunctionary in some regard. We have time set aside for a public forum, a time for our council minutes to be considered with special recognitions. We've got a petitioner tonight, administrator's report, appointments to boards and commissions. We'll have old business and then move into new business. As you can tell from the size of the audience that we have tonight, there are a couple of things on our agenda that have brought people out to take advantage of public forum. Public forum is an opportunity that we afford citizens at the first of our meeting to address issues that are relevant to the agenda that evening. For citizens and business owners, we welcome your input and insight. Based on the fact that we've got about a dozen people that would like to speak tonight, I'm going to ask that you be respective of others in the time that you allow for them appropriately in situations like this. I would ask that you confine your comments to three minutes. I will indicate the end of that time and ask you to start wrapping it down. At that point, we will limit it to five minutes at a max. After everyone has had an opportunity to speak during our forum, we will proceed on with our regularly scheduled meeting. You will notice that, per our agenda, that in regards to the mask ordinance, that is ordinance number 36 and 20, these fall at the end of our meeting. We are going to move those to some other appropriate place in the meeting after consideration of your time and interest in this issue. To leave them where they are would mean that you probably would miss the 11 o'clock news tonight if you stayed for that discussion. So we will arrange our agenda to make sure that we can get you out of here in as timely a fashion as we possibly can. With that, then we will move to our public forum. We have two issues tonight that people would like to speak to, one of which is in regards to an annexation and development issue in the city, the other is in regards to the mask issue. I will call your name. That will be an opportunity for you to come to the podium. When you get to the podium, if you would, please state your name and an address for a matter of record. Our clerk keeps a record of those that speak, and we would appreciate you doing that to give us some insight into how you fit into our community either as a business owner or a citizen. We would appreciate that. So since we only have one to speak in public forum in regards to the zoning issue this evening, I'm going to ask Mr. John Weston if he would to come to the podium, and the floor will be yours. Sir?
My name is John Weston. I live at 302 Becky Gibson Road in Greer, but not in the city of Greer. We had a, there was a planning council meeting to talk about the annexation and then the subdivision that's proposed of about 750 units on North Howell Road. I did pass out some pictures. North Howell Road runs right into Gap Creek Road, right where Greer High School is. If you're talking about adding another, at least 1,500 cars trying to go through there at any time when their school in session, it would be an absolute nightmare. There's a lot of us, a lot of people came and spoke at the planning commission meeting. A lot of them are not here. They felt like everything just kind of got railroaded and ran through, and I think little frustration there. But at the end of the day, a lot of us moved, I used to live off of Super Road, moved out towards Becky Gibson, get in the country a little more, kind of get away from the development, and here it comes running right after us. It's a small country road where you're talking about putting a subdivision with 750 units in there. Some of those units probably wouldn't enjoy being backed up to chicken farms, cow farms that are all out there as well. And like I said, I'm just wanting to speak in opposition. I'm not opposed to people being able to do what they want with their land. I have no problem with that. I think that's our right as Americans. However, I think people also need to be considerate of their neighbors and what's going to be happening around there, and we're very concerned about the traffic and the issue. What we would appreciate is a traffic study done during normal, I'm going to say it's normal, school cycle. Because right now, there's no way to do that until we know exactly what's going to happen with school and until everybody gets back into school. You really can't do a true traffic study to see what that's going to look like out there. And so we would really appreciate it as just one of the neighbors that live out there that everything be pushed back until at least a traffic study is done to see what it would look like, because we think it would be a real problem. That's as far as the subdivision. The only other thing I'd just kind of throw out there, because obviously, probably haven't been out back there, it backs up to the corner of my property, the area that's being annexed is marshland. Can't be, it won't be able to be used for any development. I think they're talking about putting a green space back there, but just thought it'd be worth your noting that it is marshland and won't be able to be used for anything, as well as a lot of that area back there. So I could probably go on for a long time, but I appreciate the opportunity to speak, appreciate the time, and thank you, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, sir. We'll move to those that indicated they wanted to speak in regards to the mask ordinance. Our first speaker this evening is Dr. Jack Davis. Dr. Davis, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, and Larry Fuller, our Secretary of State representative, and Brian Lomar, our BND representative. I'd like to talk, address the mask issue from a science and statistical aspect. Testing is indicating a rapid increase in the number of cases of COVID. Why would that be, and the death rate is going down? We've got more than one kind of test here. The one where they stick your finger, it's testing for antibodies. If you had any kind of coronavirus in the last few years, you would test positive for that. Also, we have 100 times as many tests being performed now. As I said, the death rate is going down. And the one where they go up your nose to your brain with a Q-tip would be a better test, is testing for viruses. However, although statistics don't apply, liars can always figure. And one person was suspicious of the test and sent 10 of men that hadn't been exposed to anybody, and they came back positive. That African leader tested a dog and a goat and a pineapple, and they all came back positive. And you just can't trust, when the people have a political agenda behind it, you just can't trust what they're finding. Now, what Sweden did, if you're at risk, asthma, emphysema, diabetes, gross obesity, and feeble, nursing home type stuff, stay home and wear a mask when you go out. Everybody else, you're going to get it, you're going to get over it, you know? Regular flu kills 80,000 people a year, about 1 in 1,000, but it's those target individuals I was talking about that have to worry. Sweden just said, hey, if you're sick, stay home, guard yourself, self-isolate, everybody else go back to your business, and their statistic ain't much different than ours. This virus looked like it was killing not 1 in 1,000 like the regular flu, maybe 2 in 1,000, and that's going down. It's like doing more testing, you know? But when you have people skewing your numbers, it's hard to, it's really hard to tell. The destruction to our economy far outweighs anything else, you know? And we're finding other things, like if you wear the M95 mask, it's like breathing through a milkshake straw. You have to kind of suck in, they're getting pleurisy, they're getting fluid between the wall of their lung and their lung, you know? Use common sense, you know? They're having us treat this thing like smallpox. What's that? Now, smallpox is airborne. Let me distinguish that from droplet borne. The COVID seems to be, if you cough, is however far that's going to go. But smallpox, you could breathe out, one of them things go out the ground floor of winter and come in the third floor of winter and get somebody. It can float around all by itself, but they're having us treat us like that, you know? And the dental association's about to get us to do stuff like you can have to treat patients like they're in a hospital and drape whole patient except for his mouth like you do in an operation. We need some sanity with this thing, and I would appreciate you thinking about our country and our economy, and don't get carried away with these people. Fauci said, oh, this can't go from person to person. And then later he said, that's going to kill us all. And he also said, oh, Trump will get hit with a major viral epidemic, you know? What you would really have to worry about as far as a second wave, they can't let him do anything right. If he opens everything back up, they'll get mosquito fockers and spray that stuff up and down the street, you know? I appreciate you letting me talk to you.
Mr. Stan Koster.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council, for allowing us to be here tonight. Dr. Jack, thank you. You know, there's not a person in this room that doesn't want protection for our family, our friends, and our neighbors, not just in our community, but all over this country and world. My family owns a restaurant in downtown Greer, been here a long time. We have not enforced the mask. We do enforce checking our employees' temperatures. We do enforce sanitizing, really no different than we ever have. We do enforce trying to separate when there's crowds in there. I cannot tell you each week how many compliments we get from people, not from Greer, they already know, from people from Greenville that come see us, Landrum, Spartanburg, that are so open and feel welcome, because since we've opened a restaurant back up, they want it to be like it was. I agree with Dr. Jack. If you want to wear a mask, please. We actually, in our restaurant, just like out here, giving away masks. You know how many I've given away in the last three months? One. And you know what that person was? She was one of these people that comes in and gets food and delivery somewhere, and she was scared she's going to be intimidated by going to another restaurant somewhere that enforced it. Do we want that kind of society? I've been in hospitality business all my life, over 45 years. I'm seeing a lot of my friends, a lot of my hoteliers all over the country, especially here in Greenville, that one of my dearest friends has lost his job. Two kids in college. Yes, he overspent, but a big house. To hear tears in his eyes because this mask has a lot to do with that while he's lost his job, because it's scaring people to come. I'm all for protecting ourselves, I really am. Before I close, I want to give you one example, and again, I cannot agree with Dr. Jack more, we just don't know what it is, but show me. Show me if we're wearing this mask is going to protect you or your neighbor from getting it. It's odd that since Greenville, Spartanburg, Charleston, and Columbia, I was in all those places in the last week or so, that since they've started wearing the mask, the numbers have gone up. So show me has that helped? Since the mayor of Greenville enforced it, Charleston, and Columbia, the numbers are rising. Prove to me how that helps. To me, it doesn't. A few weeks ago, I was in Harris, Cherokee, North Carolina, North Carolina. I had to go through all this paperwork for OSHA or OSHA, however you want to call them, and I respect that. We filled out page after page after page. When we got there to do our work with my employees, we were told we had to wear gloves, and we did. We were told we had to wear a mask, and we did. We were told we had to wear a shield, and we did. We were told we had to wear a hard hat, normal construction things you wear. I'm 68 years old, and it was hot in that place with all that on, I don't mind telling you. But at 11:30, a bell goes off, and all the lights go out. There must have been 200 employees, construction workers on this site. I walk outside on a loading dock, and it's lunchtime. Every one of them are shoulder to shoulder, their mask, their helmet, their face shield off, on their cell phones. So I asked the man in charge of the OSHA thing, I said, you can't catch this crap at lunchtime? That's how much we don't know. All that rigmarole just does not make sense to me. I've also heard, and councilmen, I'm proud of all of you, that's not blowing smoke, but there's rumors in this town that you've already made up your mind, and I hope you haven't, because if you do have, that's very sad. I appreciate the time to share, to listen to our community and people like me and Dr. Jack and others that are going to speak, and I appreciate the time and being here. Thank you.
Thanks, Tim. TJ Swift.
I'm TJ Swift. I live at 104 West Morland in Greer. This issue's become political, but I'm not here to talk about politics, I'm here to talk about facts. We had, beginning, when this all started, they said, don't wear a mask, then wear a mask, do this, don't, it was obvious nobody knew what they were talking about. So I did some digging. This virus, this COVID-19 virus, is .12 nanometers in diameter average. These masks that everybody's wearing right now, these surgical masks, have pore sizes hundreds of times bigger than that. And these little boutique masks that you see, sold at Target, they're hundreds of times worse than that. They do nothing. And on top of that, these surgical masks, once they get moist after you've been breathing through them for a couple of hours, they will trap this stuff. Now, it might not make its way through, but when you go to take it off, you're going to get it on you if there's any around. So for me, it's a matter of fact. This, these masks, given the science and what I've read, and I've looked CDC, I look at bona fide sources, they don't work. They are a charade. And no matter what y'all do here tonight, I'm here to tell you straight up, I will not participate in a charade, I will not wear one of these things, I just won't. If you could prove, I'll tell you what does work. The N95 mask will filter out a particulate to .1 nanometers, that's smaller. Those are 10 bucks a piece. You think anybody's going, and that's only good for one day, if they're going to be effective. How many people do you think are going to spend $10 a day on one of these masks, when most people won't even wear one of these or a boutique mask? It's just not going to happen. Now, I'm not the smittest guy in the world, but it wasn't hard for me to look these facts up, and I would hope that the folks that we elect to lead us are at least as smart as me and hopefully smarter than me. So this is a matter of common sense, let's use some. Thank you.
Benjamin Montgomery.
Hi, I'm Benjamin Montgomery, 400 West Arlington Ave, Greer, and I'm here to speak in favor of the mask ordinance. Obviously, there's some selection bias where those of us who are worried about our health are not coming at the same rates, so I hope you take that into account. I've heard a lot of facts, some of which I question, and some of which you could look up even as we meet on the South Carolina DHEC website. So why am I in favor of this ordinance? Let me point out, there have already been 984 deaths in South Carolina due to this disease. Let me also point out that DHEC, which is not a political body and is filled with experts, predicts that we will have 4,059 deaths from COVID by November 1st without widespread mask use, but they predict we will have 1,630 by November 1st if we have universal mask compliance. That's a decrease of 2,429 deaths over that time period. So how does this apply to Greer? Greer is about 2/3 of 1% of the state. This would translate to about 16 extra deaths within the city of Greer if we do not have universal masks. That amounts to about one death per week that we could avoid simply by having a mask COVID does not just kill, it also causes disease. It causes aneurysms, it causes lung disease, it causes heart disease, and it causes expensive and extensive hospitalizations. For each death, we have 10 or 20 of these other events. So if we're preventing a death every week, we are also preventing 10 or 20 hospitalizations, disabilities, and other diseases that cause, that require long-term care. So let me make an analogy here. Let's imagine that we had an intersection in the city of Greer where, on average, once a week, someone got killed and 10 or 20 people got hit and ended up in a hospital or requiring other long-term care. I'm curious what you all would do. I think the answer to that is that you would decide to put up a stop sign or a stoplight, something that is legally binding and says, we as a city value the health of our entire citizenry and will protect it. I do not think that you would say, we should show personal responsibility, and people who want to stop at this intersection can do so, and those who want to go through it can do so if they choose, because it's not just the person who is wearing the mask who is protected by that mask, it is everyone else too. We want to have an environment where employees are safe, and by having masks, we can guarantee or at least provide a safer environment than if we don't require customers and other employees to wear those masks. It's a small thing, it keeps our businesses open, it allows us to shop safely, it allows us to go to restaurants, it allows us to support other businesses in town. To me, this seems like a very small thing that would keep us all safer. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Forsyth.
I live at 117 Woodville Circle, Greer, which is just outside the city limit, by about four houses. I appreciate you allowing us to speak and address this issue. I have a daughter who is 17 years old who has a condition called Rhett syndrome. She has some difficulty with breathing issues on a daily basis. She attends Greer High School. Imposing a mask on her would be onerous. She would not have the control to keep it on her face, and she would not have the ability to breathe effectively with it on her face. But beyond that, I am concerned that there are so many of my friends in the healthcare industry who are telling me that the reporting mechanism for reporting COVID-19 causes and circumstances has just been entirely skewed, that the parameters for reporting have been changed so that everything that comes in the door that's a health issue is COVID-19. I have a concern about that. There's so many issues of questions about the effectiveness of masks, about the ability to report accurately. I would ask you what I have written to Councilmember Arrowood, and that is to urge you to believe in and rely on the intelligence of the citizens of the city of Greer and the businesses here. I believe that we're capable of determining when we need to wear masks and when masks are not required, and I would urge you to vote down the mandatory wearing of masks. Thank you.
Denise Vanenberg.
I am opposed to it. We, when we shut down, we went from 86 employees to 17 at our business. I'm sorry, my name is Denise Vanenberg, I own the Wild Ace Pizza Pub at 103 Depot Street. We literally dropped from 86 employees to 17. For the last four months, we have been building back up with every opening instance that we were allowed to do, be it dine-in, take-out only, patio only, and now dine-in limited service. I've brought all these people back. I have employees, I only have 68 currently. We did lose a few, but we are currently trying to employ a lot of people in the city of Greer. They do not want to wear masks. They have obviously threatened that they will not wear them, they will not work for me if they have to, because it's me as an employer, a real problem. If it becomes a mandate, we will definitely lose employees. We will not be allowed to service the entire area. We will probably go back to dine-in, limited, and take-out only. In the last four months, it has been a political view, in my opinion. I believe that if it was a true concern of all businesses and citizens, I believe we should all wear N95 masks, not a paper mask or whatever they're allowed to wear. In that, I did my research, I did price them out, I would want my employees to have to wear to protect theirselves and others, I would want them to wear an N95 mask, which I would supply. So on average, I would spend $2,800 a month supplying my employees with N95 masks, because in my opinion, that is the only mask that is suitable to truly protect from any virus or contaminant. So that's, again, my opinion, but I believe it's a lot of medical opinion as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Quentin Thomas.
My name is Dr. Quentin Thomas, and my practice is at 1203 West Point Set Street, and I've been there for 22 years, and I oppose masks. I'm going to read you a neat little quote. Masks mandates perpetuate the idea that individuals lack the moral or intellectual capacity to make sound decisions for themselves and their children. capacity to make sound decisions for themselves and their children, so the state or city governments need to do it for them. I don't think any state or city government needs to tell me to put on a mask. I have a lady that comes in my office, she's been a schoolteacher in Greenville County for 32 years, and she shared a story with me, and she said, she was watching, she was in Costco, and they mandated her putting a mask on, and she was watching this little three-year-old girl just dance around and having a good time, had a sundress on, smiling, laughing, and she just sat there and watched her, and the whole time, she was smiling, but she had a mask on. And this girl, as soon as she saw that woman looking at her, all she saw was a mask and two eyes. She didn't see a smile. She ran over and immediately grabbed her mom's leg because she couldn't recognize that the teacher, the schoolteacher, was actually appreciating what she was doing. A smile is, I mean, it's universal. You know, the human face is one of the most intricate things on the planet. You start taking away the ability to figure out what people are looking, looking like and what they're saying and the expression on their face, you just do a lot of bad things. So, that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Not much of a speaker, but they pretty much all said it. My employees said they're gonna not wear it. I don't believe in it. Let me think here. To me, it's a, it's a covering for you so you don't have free speech, expression, but you're gonna lose a lot. I'm gonna lose a lot of customers. You need to keep it opposed to keep the city running. If you don't, people are gonna stop coming. Wait and see.
I'm Adam Clark, I'm with 112 Trade Street, and I really appreciate the chance to say just a few words about this matter. I strongly oppose putting down a mask mandate. The, I mean, we started this thing off by having a pledge of allegiance, and I think part of the pledge is just reminding everyone of the democracy that we live in, and as I look out, most people don't have masks on. I think that says a lot. Also, as I think about, you know, the gentleman that spoke up here just a little while ago, and he had all these doom and gloom predictions. Hey, folks, we all know that fear has been a, an incredible tactic by the media and just a lot in general to manipulate us in a lot of ways. I'm all for facts, I'm 1,000% for research and hand-me knowledge. At the same time, I want knowledge. And the predictions that he was giving out, I think we can all agree, there were many expert predictions about three months ago, most of which have not come to pass. And furthermore, you know, this past Sunday in Greer, we all enjoyed, or those that were present enjoyed, the dedication of the Streetscape Project, those of us associated with the downtown businesses. I mean, words can't describe this opportunity and, and this dedication, what it means to the downtown area as well as to this city and this culture. But, you know, at this point with this dedication, let's all remember that in 2019, there were sacrifices made by the downtown businesses, loss of revenues, week after week after week, that, hey, we supported at the time, we did, 100% supported in terms of looking forward to 2020, looking forward to the end of 19. Sure enough, on Trade Street, when things got opened up, you know, our business in particular, in December, just rocked it. I mean, we did fantastic business in December, strong January, strong February, then all of a sudden, we all get hit with this catastrophe. And, obviously, extremely unexpected, all of us are reeling from it, but then, unfortunately, our governor decided to issue closures, not just to our restaurant industry, but also to many other businesses in the state of South Carolina that were hit with this and suffered from this as well. But us in downtown, you know, we, we endured things in 2019, and then we turn around and get hit with something unexpected in 2020. From my understanding, there have already been multiple businesses in downtown that have closed permanently. I think this is nothing less than a tragedy. And I can tell you this, about three and a half weeks ago, we had a couple of customers come in. One of the ladies, she's a CFO for a restaurant company here in the state of South Carolina, they've got six or seven locations throughout the state, one is in downtown Greenville. And after their experience, we were talking, and she said how much their business is suffering. And she said, "We're all wearing masks, we're all wearing gloves, we have no customers." Okay? And, and this was before Greenville pushed down the mask mandate that they did. And, you know, it struck me as amazing, her, appeared to be husband with her, said that it's like walking into a hospital. So the concept that businesses are going to make it by just, hey, simple thing, put on mask, we'll all make it, we'll all be fine, you can forget it. Okay? And I don't know everybody else's P and L statements. All I can say is, there's been significant sacrifices, suffering, and, I mean, my gosh, the Streetscape is beautiful, but we need feet walking on that Streetscape, okay? And further, too, just to kind of wrap it up, the, we have customers coming from Charlotte, we have Tryon, we have customers coming from North Carolina, coming from Greenville to us and complimenting us because we're not doing the mask thing. And I personally feel in conclusion that the culture of Greer, the citizens, those coming to visit, I believe we're intelligent enough, have enough responsibility and integrity to make this decision for ourselves. Thank you for your time.
Brian, and I am sorry, it may be Loemeyer, Loemeyer?
My name is Brian Loemeyer, I live at 132 Circle Drive, and I've worked in the, I've worked in surgery, I worked in surgery earlier in my career at Greenville Memorial Hospital for 10 years, wore a lot of masks, and that was necessary in surgery, okay? But I disagree with this mask, any type of ordinance, taking away the freedom of the citizens for a very questionable, in my opinion, and from what I've seen, a very questionable benefit of any kind. I'm gonna just read you something, because I'm not really one to remember a lot of stuff, but, "Science says healthy people should not wear masks. How can a person be forced by any business or government entity to wear a mask which affects respiratory system without having a physical exam by a licensed doctor who approves such an action?" And I will say, I wear a mask every day at work at BMW because of requiring it. It is not good for my health, just the lack of oxygen and the, you know, I'm just gonna tell you, it's, it's hard because you're physically working very hard and you still are trying to breathe your own air. Science says, "Healthy people should not wear masks. Masks reduce intake of oxygen, leading to carbon dioxide toxicity. Germs are trapped near your mouth and nose, increasing risk of infection. Wearing a mask causes you to touch your face much more frequently." There's no scientific evidence that supports healthy people wearing masks. And then there's some other things that are maybe not as much health-related, but masks obscure your facial features and impede normal social interaction, masks make it hard for hearing impaired people to understand you, I've experienced that already. Masks, in just a normal conversation, some people don't speak that clearly, you can't, you say, "Excuse me, what did you say?", and you get a lot of misunderstandings. Those are not health, but those are just really annoying things that are going on. Masks symbolize suppression of speech. But my point is masks do not spread, prevent the spread of virus, and the key findings like New England Journal of Medicine says, "We know that wearing a mask outside healthcare facilities offers little if any protection from infection." I have a, a link to a document there for that. California OSHA regulations, "Cloth face coverings do not protect against COVID-19." California Department of Health, "Face coverings may increase risk if users reduce the use of strong defenses such as washing hands and things like that." There is limited evidence to suggest that use of cloth face coverings by the public during a pandemic could reduce, could reduce disease transmission. FDA says, "Even a properly fitted N95 mask does not prevent illness or death." CDC says, "There is no scientific evidence for healthy people wearing masks." Neurosurgeon Dr. Russell Blaylock says, "There is no scientific evidence that masks are effective. If you are not sick, you should not wear a face mask." Columbia University, "Psychological harms of face masks," and what the other man was talking about, children being concerned because they can't see your face. U.S. Surgeon General Jerome Adams says, "Masks are not effective in preventing the general public from catching coronavirus." Dr. Anthony Fauci, "People should not be walking around wearing masks. Masks do not prevent the protection people think they do." The WHO, Dr. Mike Ryan says, "There is no specific evidence to suggest that the wearing of masks by the mass population has any potential benefit. In fact, there's some evidence to suggest the opposite in the misuse of wearing a mask properly or fitting it properly." U.S. Department of Labor, this is my last thing. OSHA, "Oxygen deficient in any atmosphere that contains less than 19.5%. This happens when the oxygen is displaced by inert gas such as carbon dioxide, which we exhale, and is the leading cause of fatalities." So unless you can, with 100% certainty, see that this is not gonna do more damage than it does good, I would please ask you to consider not making this mandate. I think it's, it's a, it's a serious violation of our, of our rights, and it can affect our health in a bad way. And I've noticed wearing a mask at work has made me have a lot of, some side effects that are, you know, I have to deal with, you know? So, anyway, thank you for listening, and...
Thank you, sir.
Folks, that, that ends our public forum for this evening. We do appreciate those that have appeared this evening for your insight and, and for your opinion that you have shared. I am, I am sure that council does not take your opinion lightly. And with that, we will move on to the other portions of our meeting this, this evening. Council, you have contained in your packet the minutes of the council meeting from June 23rd, 2020. I'll entertain a motion that those minutes be received.
Sir, say.
I didn't get that, Ms. Duncan, did you?
You got it?
Um, I have a motion in a second. Any items to move for the clerk? Hearing number, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopler?
Yes.
Mr. Dunlos?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Ellsworth?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Let's see, Mr. Griggers, we're gonna ask you to join us in the front if we can figure
Folks, from, from time to time, we have the opportunity to recognize employees that reach milestones with their employment here at the city of Greer. It is always a welcome opportunity for us to recognize those folks who have spent either a portion or their entire career with us. We like to do that, and we, we make that a regular practice to offer our appreciation to those folks that have lent their time and their talent here to us over the years. We also take satisfaction in those folks that have spent enough time either with the city of Greer or in the state retirement system to get to the point that they're able to retire. And this evening, we have a certificate of appreciation for one of our retirees. And, yeah, we're gonna give him a paid day off. We, we, we have, we have had a, a small ceremony beforehand with some of our employees that got to participate in this, and Ed has got some family here with us this evening, and we appreciate them being with us and, and making the effort to come up from Columbia, and Christie, his wife, and so... We got, we've got a certificate of appreciation that says, "Congratulations upon your retirement from the city of Greer, resident in appreciation of 20 years of dedicated service to the city of Greer, June 1st, 2000, August 1st, 2020. Ed Greer."
Thank you, sir.
We, we like to give a gift to our retirees, and traditionally, we give a grandfather's clock. As you can tell by the way he's carrying it, this, this appears to be maybe more of a mantle clock than a grandfather clock, but we, we're not sure. One way or the other, it's a clock. And so you can keep track of time in your retirement. And so, on behalf of the city of Greer, and certainly the Greer City Council, we want to present you with, with this small token of our appreciation. And thank you. And Christie, I think it'd be appropriate for you to come up as well for, for us to present this to you and Ed, because I know it will have a place of significance in your primary residence here in, in Greer, or another home where it can overlook some water. So, we want to present this to you on our behalf.
Thank you, Mayor Danner. I, I did want to take a moment first to say to our team members that chose to come out this evening, thank you. This is your time to be with your family, and you chose to come and support me this evening as, as we do this. And so I want to thank members of Team Greer that have, that have come out tonight to say goodbye as well. To Mayor and Council, I'll have a few comments a little bit later in the meeting, particularly as we wrap up, to, to share with you. But I, but I do want to say this. During the reception, we were, we were calculating a bit about how much time we've spent together. spent together. And when you start doing the math, it gets a little bit amazing. We typically meet about in formal sessions or retreat sessions or workshops about 30 times a year. And if you do that over, over 20 years, we very quickly know that we've spent about 600 days and evenings together. And some of those are very, very long amounts of time. And then when I looked at how you've, how you've challenged me to do my job, that I, I spent a lot of my times in meetings with our colleagues, with our organizations in the community. And, and that number surprised me a bit too. And that totals up over the 20 years, about 24,000 meetings that have been held. And so between being with you and representing you, about 25,000 times, I've got to walk into a meeting and represent the City of Greer. And, and there's never been a time that I've regretted a single one of those. No matter what the issue, no matter what the controversy, no matter what the challenge or the opportunity, it has been a pleasure for 20 years to serve this community. And I'm quite proud of what we have accomplished. So thank you very, very much.
Smartest thing this council ever did was not to pay him by the hour. Over time would have killed us. It is not often that we have a petitioner, but we do deny. And petitioner is someone who takes advantage of an opportunity to come and speak before council. Outside of public forum, the time of public forum is set aside for those that would like to speak to items relevant to the agenda. A petitioner is afforded time, if they are a citizen of the city, to come before the city to offer insight or personal opinion or whatever to an item that they feel might be best be addressed at a council level. We entertain petitioners from time to time. It does require that you sign up for this opportunity prior to the meeting, which is a little different from our public forum. But this evening, we have got Ms. Norma Gibbons. And Ms. Gibbons is coming to speak with council tonight regarding her neighborhood. Ms. Gibbons, the floor is yours, ma'am. As a matter of record, if you will give us your name and address, we would appreciate it.
Thank you very much, mayor and members of council. I'm Dr. Norm Nesbit Gibbons and I reside at 103 Stokes Street, across the street in Greer. I was reared in the Sunnyside community. And after years of living away, I returned home in 2009. And I'm current, and I'm a current resident in my hometown. I'm proud that my family, the Nesbits, has resided at 103 Stokes Street since 1926, five generations of us. I'm proud that my telephone number still starts with 877, which represents old Greer. Why am I here? I come to you because my Sunnyside community has been continuously overlooked and marginalized. There have been no noticeable improvements in our community since I left for college in 1964 to when I returned to Greer in 2009. My purpose is to express my concerns as it relates to the following in our Sunnyside community: the insufficient infrastructure, the limited recreational activities for the youth, and the limited services of animal control. Insufficient infrastructure, virtually no curbing and only one sidewalk throughout the community, no drainage for water, very poor street lighting, narrow roads usage because of debris that continuously remain on the streets, limbs that need to be trimmed, and you only have to visit Oak Street, poor bandwidth in our community. For example, I'm always knocked out of Zoom meetings. Number two, limited recreational activities for the youth, no organized recreational programs. As when I was growing up, still today, the vast majority of young people of color do not swim. There is no opportunity to learn to swim. I do not swim. I also encourage other programs such as synchronized swimming, gymnastics, archery, and the like. With the new golf course, a first tee program is an excellent opportunity for the student to aid and develop our youth, girls and boys, through learning the game of golf. It is almost a guarantee that our youth will benefit greatly and it will provide the impotence for a successful life more than football. There is one gem in our community, but we know of no organized recreational programs, no competent staff to teach and train our youth. Third, limited services of animal control. Animal and control services are limited in the city to dogs and cats. I have a groundhog in my yard who resides under my home. Contracting this service to an outside agent would render this problem. Please respond to me in writing as to when and how you will address my concerns. I did provide a handout to you that shows my address and contact information. Looking at all the improvements in downtown Greer, the construction of a new hotel in downtown Greer, and the purchase of a new golf course, it is very evident that the city has money. We want some of that funding channeled into our community, just as money has been designated for improvements in downtown Greer and other surrounding communities. I'm happy that one of my neighbors have joined me this evening. So I represent her and all of the persons in my community. I also represent our legacy, all of the former residents who were the best neighbors. They were God-loving, hard-working taxpayers. The late Booker and Georgiana Pearson, George and Alla Young, Lee and Madora Miller, Ed and Eleanor Miller, Ed and Olapula, Eugene and Auntie Mae Sullivan, Harold and Elizabeth Cipio, Boyd and Minnie Foster, Roland and Mag Terry, and my mother, Ella Jane Nesbit, and many others who owned their property and received virtually no amenities from the City of Greer. Aside from the aesthetics, we want and need resources that will upgrade our community. We want more than lip service to have a conversation. We want action. Please in writing, address our concerns and tell us how you are going to channel resources into our Sunnyside community. I thank you for this privilege.
We thank you for your time and thoughtful remarks. We appreciate it. We will move to the administrator's report. Mr. Driggers, the floor is yours.
Thank you, sir, for, we'll push that away a little bit. Thank you for the opportunity. A couple of items that we do want to bring your attention to. Please note that on your table, we have placed a commemorative item. We had some discussion about this Sunday evening at our ribbon cutting and dedication of the downtown Streetscape project, our synergy project. What you have in front of you, what's important about that is that as we were beginning to, to make the change from the old to the new, we thought it was appropriate to preserve some of that history. And so we had, we had artists that milled the wood from some of those trees that we've removed in downtown. And they have been able to construct a fine writing instrument that you have in front of you this evening. Keep it as a keepsake and as a remembrance of our involvement in that project. It is a, it is a small token of appreciation to you for your work that you have engaged in to allow us to proceed with this project, complete this project. But most especially, we're also offering these to our downtown businesses, our merchants, our store operators that have, that for 18 months allowed us to be in their front door as we constructed this project. So I just wanted to make sure that you're getting those in your hand this evening as well. I will cherish mine and I'm sure that you will yours as well. I am in the process of transitioning. As you are aware, I will actually be finishing up officially, at least with the state retirement system, on the 1st of August, 2nd of August. And that's over the weekend. And of course, the new city administrator will be assuming duties and responsibilities the following day. So there is no, there is no lack of transition that is there. I will conclude my responsibilities in the office next Friday, the 24th. It certainly will be available if you should meet me in that following week as we, as we're concluding that, that service at that time. I did have an opportunity today to meet with Mr. Merriman. It was a wonderful opportunity. He came in and the two of us got to know each other a bit. And I am confident that you have made a very good selection. And I think you know that as well. It's what got you to where you are at this point. But we had a wonderful conversation about what he will be doing when he comes on board and getting started. I was, I was very, very pleased with, with the individual that I had an opportunity to spend time with today. I think you will be well, well served as you continue to move forward. We received lots of good comments and accolades since your selection has been made known as well. We are in the process of completing that transition. Much of that is happening really in the office area for us as workers will be ready to, to do that as well. And afterwards, as I indicated, there'll be some additional comments at the end of the meeting of some things that I would like to share with you at that time. And we are also, as a workplace issue, we are continuing to have discussions, conversation about how we best meet the needs of our employees relative to social distancing, for the use of masks or not, how we are providing for our employees to be continuing to work in a safe environment. And so I wanted to make you aware that we are continuing to do some alternative scheduling. We're continuing to allow folks to come and go at different times. We're finding that when there is a request of members of our staff, we're being very successful in getting able to accommodate those requests. At least we haven't been able to do that so far. So that's going really well for us. And obviously, we will, we will watch closely action that you'll be taking this evening and how that may direct us as well as a matter of workplace for our employees as we continue to move forward. For the nearly 300 employees of the city, we take seriously our responsibility to make sure that, that one, that they are indeed protected in the workplace, and that two, that they know that we are to the best of our ability accommodating their needs to be able to do that as well. We did wrap up with the ribbon cutting and the dedication Sunday evening of our synergy project. There are still punch list items that are happening out there. We're still working on some landscaping and we've got an intersection that we still have some work to, to complete in a number of punch list items. So the crews will be on board with us for several more weeks as we work through that. And you will see that crosswalks will be, will be lighted over the next couple of days. You'll see that wave island signage will still be installed as we work through this as well. We, we are moving forward with phase two of the Streetscape project, synergy phase two. That allows us to move on down Main Street. It also allows us on Cannon Street from Point Set Street down to Arlington, Main Street, Point Set Street to Arlington and Jason Street. In the middle of that, we will be making improvements to that area relative to storm drainage, curb gutter, decorative light fixtures, brick painting in the sidewalk areas, new sidewalk, and of course, new pavement in those areas as well. And so we will continue with sawsome construction as we work through that project. We were very, very pleased that we partnered earlier today with Greer Development Corporation and had an opportunity to share information relative to our hotel project. And so the owners and managing operators of that, of that project were with us today to share some additional information on that and the announcement for a new project that we've been referring to as Project Homecoming. That developer chose that venue this morning to go ahead and make some announcements relative to that project as well. Of course, you will be considering some action later this evening relative to development rate on that project. We are very, very pleased to see that he's committed to announce his plans to move forward with that project. We are continuing to work on Kids Planet, the revitalization of the Central Park area specifically to Kids Planet. That project has, rain really slowed us down a bit over there. We had some bad soil issues, but we are moving forward on that project. We are now scheduled for the installation of the playground equipment. That equipment has arrived on site and we're in the process. I actually haven't been by to start any installation yet. I don't believe so. They're finishing, the crews are finishing up art at another nearby community and they will be mobilized here to start getting that equipment erected in that park as well. So all of those pieces are falling together for us. And starting available answering questions you can have on any of those things that I've reported on or to answering any of the questions that you may have at this time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. We move to appointments of boards and commissions in the Board of Zoning Appeals, District 3. Thomas McAvoy's term expires 6/30/2020. Mr. Hopper represents District 3. I believe he has a nomination for us this evening.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and council. I emailed some information to you this afternoon about my nominee, Ms. Christie Poole. Got to know Ms. Poole beginning last summer during my campaign. Lives in Riverwood Farms subdivision area, but has lived in Greer basically her entire life. Been involved in various aspects of the community, cares about Greer, loves Greer, feel like would be a good fit to serve in this, in this capacity. So I would like to nominate Christie Poole for this evening.
I'll entertain a motion to, a second?
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Floor is open for discussion or questions of Mr. Hopper regarding his nomination. Hearing then, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Ms. Ellerberg?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Council, let's move to items of old business. The first of which is an ordinance to amend the City of Greer zoning ordinance by amending Article Five, Zoning District Regulations, Section 18 DT Downtown Greer Overlay District. Mr. McManahan joins us for that conversation. Floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As requested from the first reading, we have amended that ordinance. We have put in the language to require one space for new development that are three or more. What I have up here on the screen is the overlay district. That is something I wasn't able to show on the Zoom meeting that we had when we first discussed this. So you see how far it actually expands out. The overlay is not just kind of our core area. It kind of expands out to Arlington, down to Daniel, all the way out to Miller.
Go back to that.
Yes, sir.
Is that crossing, is that Line Street there and then to the left where it?
Yes, sir. It crosses over Line and kind of connects closer to Highland, and then it's just basically the properties that face Line Street on the other side.
Now, the boundary is all the way around, what?
The boundary is the, the blue area.
You know, kind of point out of the street?
Yes, sir.
The blue, light blue area there. And this is the downtown overlay as opposed to the historic overlay?
Yes, sir. This is separate. Yes, sir.
Now, yeah, I know that's, the overlay district, that was set by us at some point, but is that C1 zone, or is that just the overlay that gets, that encompasses more than C1?
There is some more than C1. There is some OD, very little C2, but the majority of it is C1 with some OD and very little residential as you go over towards West Church. Some of that is residential zoning.
Is that an already established overlay district?
Yes, sir.
So the overlay district is already established and not?
No, we're not changing the boundaries. No, sir.
We're going with the existing overlay district?
Yes, sir.
That we already have?
And these are just the proposed changes that we, we have talked about with, I know, Mr. Arrowood, I watched the last meeting where you had talked about the sidewalks. We brought that from the Community Master Plan. That was part of the bicycle and walking pedestrian plan. That's where we came up with that eight feet requirement, up to eight feet. That gives staffs a little bit of discretion to if, you know, a site's not appropriate for an eight foot, it may be appropriate for a five foot. I just remember hearing that at the last meeting. And that's just where we're saying new development will be required to have one space for developments of three or more. That's all that I have for this, but I'll be happy to answer any questions y'all may have.
For the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive. Second. I have a motion and a second. Floor is open for discussion.
I know we talked about the parking downtown, and it says one space for, for three units. And so, we're, like downtown, for instance, well, they have to, they'd have to physically own a space and then dedicate that for somebody to park there. Is that?
If they're building, if it's new construction, they're completely vacant site, they're going vertical, they'll have to comply with the, the parking requirement to have those three spaces on their property.
And it would have to be part of their property, or they could, they could, could they have a leased space or something like that, like an adjacent lot or something that?
The way the code's written currently, they couldn't. That's where they could go to the Board of Zoning Appeals and ask for a variance if their site is just inconducive to have those spaces put on there. They could request a variance for that.
How does this apply to where the overlay encompasses residential? And the home is there now, goes away, somebody builds something new, and so that would just be, how would that be considered, just one?
They would only be, yes, sir. They'd only be required to have one space. Currently, we require all residential property outside of the overlay to have a minimum of two spaces. So this would just require them to have one.
Others?
Uh, I'm thinking of the case. If the text change we asked to make was one space per three units, is that right?
I believe, from my understa, from my recollection, it was you wanted the number of units to trigger that one space?
Right.
Higher than one that we had it previously at.
So if they're going from ground up, it's three units, three dwellings?
Three dwellings, yes, sir.
They would have to have one space?
Three per uni, three per unit, or one per unit, I apologize. If it's three units, they're building brand new, they would have to have three spaces. It's basically anything over three units would have to have that one space per unit.
What about like a conversion? Like, for instance, if it was a building that didn't have residential units, converted to residential, would that, that wouldn't?
We wouldn't consider that new construction. We would consider that an existing building.
I guess that's why I was asking that question earlier, because that seems like that would be very difficult for them to?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So I, so you're saying if somebody just leveled a building downtown, then they would have to comply with this and provide that space?
Yes, sir.
Because again, it would be new construction. It'd be a lot easier to do that versus, because I just, I can't see that happening for existing buildings down there now, and that's, I'm sorry. That's why I kind of?
Yes, sir.
A little confused, but okay, I got you.
Well, as long as we're confused.
Keep it going.
And we talked about this last time. Let's assume there is a building that's destroyed or torn down, traced through. They're going to get back to residential. So in the front, since you walk out the front door, it's public. You walk out the back door, it's public. So what happens?
If it's just one unit or two units, they wouldn't have to comply. If it's three or more, they would, or they could ask for a variance from the Board of Zoning Appeals. And if it, the sites in downtown, they're very small, so it would be hard to put those parking on the spots, and I think that would be a, a good variance request for that applicant.
Well, then how does that? Okay, now we're going to just go back and compare that to the R1. So they don't have to have parking, right?
No commercial, currently in the downtown overlay, no use is required to have parking downtown. No commercial, no residential uses are required to have parking. We're still not going to require the commercial uses to have, to, if they build a new commercial building, we're not going to require that parking. It's just for residential, because typically, they will have cars that stay here on weekends, stay here at night, so they are taking up those public spaces. That was staff's thought behind this.
No, I understand that. What I'm talking about is where that overlay encompasses R1. They build a new house on that lot, they don't have to have any parking?
If it is one house, no.
All right.
If they did triplex?
Then, yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Alford?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Council, our second item, thank you, sir. Our second item of old business this evening is the second and final reading of ordinance number 28-2020. This is a item that needs to come for your attention in executive session. I will ask that we hold this, this matter over to executive session at this point in time. I anticipate that there is possible action to be taken following that time together to consider this matter, so we will move on to new business in that regard. Speaking of which, um, what I would like for us to do is to make some changes to our agenda this evening. I want to be as respectful to all of our attendees, be it staff and/or those that are here in another regard. Nevertheless, we have a number of items before us in new business this evening, some of which will require special attention, particularly in regards to zoning items as, as well as the mask ordinance, and you have heard comment in that regard. Council, I am going to ask that since we have, it appears to me, three items that we can dispense of with relative amount of, of discussion and staff is involved, that we're going to address those three items. That will, that will leave us all of our zoning issues as well as our potential first reading of the mask ordinance and the mask resolution if necessary. So what I am willing to do is, is to jump around a bit. I will, I will read the ordinance and we'll give Ms. Duncan time to find where we are and keep up with this as, as we go along, but we are going to consider Items A and B. Then we are going to jump over several pages and consider Item I, and then we are going to, um, take time to talk about how we're going to proceed in regards to ordinance number 36. We will consider Items J and K, and then we're going to back up and take care of all of our zoning issues following that. So Mr. McManahan will be with us for the rest of the evening, so. So with that then, we're going to move into new business, the first of which is going to be the final reading of Resolution Number 172020. This is a Resolution certified nine. Inglesby Street is an abandoned textile mill site in the City of Greer, South Carolina, requires action and is presented by Reno Deaton, our Executive Director of Greer Development Corporation.
Mayor and Council, good evening and thank you. This resolution is in reference to property within the Greer mill footprint, not the building proper, but property adjacent that has been used for textile mill purposes throughout the years. I believe the resolution that you have in your packet adequately addresses that. The resolution, in fact, in your packet has been reviewed and approved as deformed by Michael Kozlarik, the City of Greer's Economic Development Attorney. I'd also like to introduce Richard Few. He is the attorney representing the applicant and is here tonight as well to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. And if you'll just be available at this point, I don't know that, that we'll, we'll need you, but if you want to be available, we'll, we'll certainly call upon you if we need additional information, sir. With that then, I'll entertain a motion to receive first and final reading of Resolution Number 172020.
A motion?
Have a motion to hear a second.
Second.
Floor is open for discussion or question. Tell Mr. Few or Mr. Deaton anything? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Alford?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Thank you.
We'll move to Item B, which is the first and final reading of Resolution 192020. This is the South Carolina Local Government Investment Pool Consent Form. This consent form and resolution authorizes the city to participate in the South Carolina Local Government Investment Pool and provides the city additional options for investing their funds. Mr. Seifer?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As you just read, this is a, a simple resolution, a simple authorization, but it will authorize the city to utilize the services from the State Treasurer's Office, the local government investment pool, and will simply just give us another option that we can pursue to invest funds of the city as they are sitting idle for, you know, whatever period of time that they are idle.
Thank you, sir. I'll entertain a motion to receive.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Floor is open for discussion. Questions of Mr. Seifer? Hearing done, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Alford?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Council, we're going to move to the first reading of Ordinance Number 35-2020. This is authorizing a lease purchase agreement, Series 2020, in the principal amount not exceeding $2,507,103 related to the financing of equipment for municipal purposes, authorizing the execution and delivery of documents, including a lease agreement and other related there, other related matters. Mr. Seifer?
Again, thank you, Mayor and Council. This ordinance bringing forward to you tonight authorizes the city to move into the lease purchase program. This is the amount approved through the budget process that Council approved at our last meeting in June, and the dollars are equivalent for the budget and to the lease purchase ordinance, so they are identical.
Comes to us as a recommendation from staff. Do I hear a motion to receive?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. If floor is open for discussion. Questions? Hearing done, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Alford?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Council, with some explanation on my part, we are going to move to Item J. If necessary, we will move to Item K as the next two items before us as a matter of explanation for those that continue to join us in regards to the reading of Ordinance 362020. As you can tell from those folks that spoke tonight, there is a lot of information for Council to consider in this regard. I know personally that our Council is long and hard in regards to this, to this ordinance. I, I am hopeful, but not overly confident that everybody that spoke this evening had read or studied this ordinance. You've had an opportunity to take a look at it. It is, it is based on one that was passed and approved in the City of Greenville. It requires all persons entering a grocery store or pharmacy. Specific in its term to what a grocery store is. It is not a convenience store or a household goods store or other business that may sell some food items, but is not their primary business. This would be the only establishments in the city that would require both staff and customers to have face coverings on at the same time. The business itself should not, shall not have responsibility for enforcing the requirement. Signage would be posted at the entrance informing the patrons of the requirement of the section. I think it would be incumbent upon us as a city to provide them a sample of what that language might look like and possibly even some signage in regards to something that we would put on a paper size notice that indeed this is of the city's directive if it, if it passes as opposed to that of the establishment. There are approximately a total of 15 grocery stores and pharmacies inside the city, and as you are aware, several that surround the city as well, but this is only for those that was inside the city. For other businesses that are listed, restaurants, retail stores, salons, beauty shops, barber shops, the grocery stores and pharmacies, this ordinance would require their employees to wear a mask. to wear a mask when they are having a face-to-face interaction with the public. This does not require anybody that is not forward-facing, as we say in the retail business, to wear a mask in whatever portion of the business that they work in if they are not dealing with the public. For example, restaurants, those people that serve behind the scenes, dishwashers and cooks and others that may not be waiting on fit folks, would not be required to wear masks in retail stores. It may be stalkers or clerks or others that are there. Salon owners would not have to wear the mask while they are not dealing with a client. Same would go for beauty shops, barber shops, and of course, the grocery store and pharmacy issue is covered in section one. In regards to several points that were brought up by some of the folks tonight, any person who is unable to safely wear the face mask covering either due to age, children would certainly be exempt if they are not able to wear it safely or to keep it on or have an issue that might cause them distress wearing one, would not be required underlying health problems or are unable to remove the face covering themselves without assistance. There is a section in here that addresses ordinance infractions. It is a civil infraction punishable by a fine of no more than twenty-five dollars for those who own businesses. It could be a fine of up to a hundred dollars if there is intentional violation of the ordinance. Goes on to give some definition to the rest of the ordinance. The ordinance would be effective at six oh one, July the seventeenth twenty twenty. That would be Friday evening. We have arranged to have masks available for distribution free of charge at this point through the Chamber of Commerce, and we would assist with the signage as well. This comes to us for consideration as a means of explanation for those of you who may be new to this process. It is typically our procedure that I would allow discussion to take place at Counsel's directive. We often engage in conversation to the point that one of the speakers made tonight that they hoped that there would be vigorous dialogue that might persuade or change someone's mind. And while I'm not sure that we're entirely at that point this evening, we do want to give every member of Counsel the opportunity and the right to speak as we did those that we entertained in our public forum this evening. We have had some discussion in that regard, and Counsel has approved that we consider this matter a little differently than we have others in the past, and I think that it is appropriate for the discussion that lies before us. Our intent tonight is going to be to get a motion and a second, first reading of the ordinance thirty-six twenty twenty. Following that, we will allow, I will allow, those members of Counsel that would like to address the ordinance, the time to do so uninterrupted by other members of Counsel and without rebuttal at the end of their time. Each member of Counsel will be given whatever amount of time is necessary for their comments related to the ordinance, and we will offer the opportunity to all members of the Counsel to give consideration and voice their thoughts and opinions to the ordinance. Following my comments, which I will gladly offer as the last one this evening, we will ask Ms. Duncan to take a vote, and we will move through, move from there. If the ordinance passes, there will be some consideration of whether or not it be necessary to consider the reading of the resolution. If it fails, we will move then directly to the consideration of first and final reading of the Resolution twenty 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 before we go back to our regular business this evening. Counsel, are we of one mind and opinion in that regard? If so, we have a first and final reading of ordinance thirty-six twenty twenty. This is an emergency ordinance requiring individuals to wear face coverings in certain circumstances and matters related thereto. I'll entertain a motion that we receive. And I'll entertain a motion, a second.
Second.
The floor is open for discussion. Mr. Bettis?
Mr. Mayor, I appreciate you allowing me to kick it off. I'll try to keep my one-hour remarks brief.
Thanks.
I'm not here to debate the merits of the COVID-19 SARS CO2 virus, or as I named it long ago, the CYA virus. There are without a doubt groups of people, whether by age, race, socioeconomic standing, culture, mental health, medical condition, or weakened immune system that require extensive protections. I fully support their right to protect themselves in such a way that they do not trample on the rights of others. COVID-19, a strand of RNA surrounded by a sheath of protein and spikes of glycoprotein, is obviously a very contagious agent, one of the newest revealed in a history of millions of viruses, which are one of the most numerous biological entities on earth. I'm not a virologist or a microbiologist, but even I recognize that this virus has been treated much differently than any other virus in my lifetime. There has been a lot of fear mongering. The science is consistently or constantly evolving. We're learning what is currently right and what has been wrong each day. Many of our health agencies are struggling to have a reliable message. We hear the air droplets are too heavy. The air droplets are a fine spray. It travels three feet, six feet, up to thirty feet. It stays on certain surfaces two minutes, ten minutes, two hours. Type O blood looks less susceptible and type A looks more susceptible. We are historically still early in the analysis. As Donald Rumsfeld once said, "We don't know what we don't know." Statistics, the collection, analysis, interpretation, and presentation of data. There has been an unprecedented manipulation by many parties to produce their own preferred results. These parties have tainted many of the statistics that we are bombarded with each hour of each day by failing to reveal many basic rules and criteria behind their results. The term COVID-19 has been abused for data purposes and can actually carry a monetary incentive for facilities that exploit the term. We hear ventilators are in dire need, or, "Oh, we have more ventilators than we needed." We need more beds, or, "We don't need more beds." Hospitals are overwhelmed, or, "Hospitals are laying off people and may have to close due to suspending elective procedures." The IC unit is at two-hundred-and-fifty percent of capacity, but, oh, by the way, the normal capacity was only five patients. Tests are hard to get, or, "Testing is way up." South Carolina testing is actually at three and a half times what it was in May and four times what it was in April. Cases are up as expected with increased testing, and the average age of new cases is thirty-one years, an age that tolerates the virus very well and has an almost incalculable death rate. The death rate continues to go down. The fatality rate drops with each batch of testing. We hear, "We can't open the schools. The kids will carry the virus to teachers." In fact, school-aged children are not vectors. That is, they don't carry the virus, and the statistics on their sickness are minuscule. Deaths are almost zero. Mark Twain made famous the Benjamin Disraeli quote that there are three kinds of lies: lies, damn lies, and statistics. There has been a political football from the very beginning with this virus. It has been shamefully exploited unlike any other virus for political gain or harm, just like any other issue in today's society. It's a huge election year. Too many entities with an agenda. Many media are suspect. The same virus that elicits calls from some media for panic among groups in some states and in certain situations seems to be benign and not important in other states and situations. Perhaps the media know more about the infection preference of this virus than most virologists. As with most all human affairs in today's politically charged atmosphere, the publicized severity or control of COVID-19 outbreaks depend on whose ox is being gored, as Martin Luther pointed out. Economically, there can be no doubt that COVID-19 has had a devastating effect on a once robust economy. It has been quite a balancing act by government, merchants, and consumers to navigate the perfect storm that has been created. One man's nonessential business may be another man's essential business, and each and every business is certainly essential to the livelihood of its owner and any number of employees. Shortages of goods due to factory shutdowns are still common in the marketplace. Masks. The reporting on masks and the effects of wearing one is all over the board. Anyone with internet access can find many supporting stories and studies to support any given stance on the use of masks. If we are honest with ourselves, here are the facts. N95 masks, they only filter contaminants when you inhale, not when you exhale. The COVID-19 virus always hitches a ride on droplets or aerosols, which makes it easier to filter, but only on the way in. They have a short lifespan for health's sake. Surgical masks, these are designed and approved for sterile environments. Continuous use will clog the mask and render it useless quickly in an open environment. If you come in contact with COVID and your mask traps it, you become a walking virus dispenser. Every time you put your mask on, you are breathing the germs from everywhere you went. They should be disposed of about every thirty minutes. Cloth masks. Cloth masks do not filter anything, no filtering whatsoever. As you exhale, you are ridding your lungs of contaminants and carbon dioxide. Cloth masks trap this carbon dioxide the best. It actually risks your health rather than protect it. In addition to affecting blood oxygen levels, the moisture caught in these masks can become mildew-ridden overnight. Cough, allergic reactions, and sore throat are all symptoms of a micro mold in your mask. Now, in spite of all this depressing information, I fully support the right of all free people to wear a mask to combat the dissemination of the COVID-19 virus whenever it is your choice as the right thing for your solution, your situation, your physical condition, your protection, and your beliefs. The South Carolina Constitution of eighteen ninety-five says that all political power is vested in the people. No person is to be deprived of life, liberty, or property without due process. This is the process. While Greer City Council does not have the ultimate authority to override a gubernatorial edict, we do have an opportunity now to say we've already suffered enough from your continuing highly questionable executive orders and our legislators' lack of a backbone to call you out. Thomas Paine said, "Government at its best is a necessary evil, in its worst state, an intolerable one." Government's first duty is to protect people, not run their lives. That's Ronald Reagan. And we have all read Benjamin Franklin's admonishment that those who would give up essential liberty to purchase a little temporary safety deserve neither liberty nor safety. But much closer to home and just a couple of weeks ago, Sheriff Chuck Ryba, Spartanburg County, a man who has seen a lot and experienced a lot, much of which we would not want to see, hit the nail on the head, as he usually does. He emphasized the need for the use of masks for those that need it, and he praised Spartanburg County Council for their lack of government overreach or a mandate for masks. I recognize that COVID-19 is a highly contagious virus, just like the twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen influenza outbreak, the twenty-thirteen through twenty-sixteen Ebola virus, the two thousand nine, two thousand and ten swine flu, the nineteen sixty-eight through nineteen seventy Hong Kong flu that killed between one and four million, the nineteen fifty-seven through nineteen fifty-eight influenza outbreak that killed between one and four million, all the way back to the nineteen eighteen Spanish flu that killed between seventeen and a hundred million. And there are dozens of other such fevers, viruses, and plagues that are scattered among these more modern incidents, and all the way back to the time before the birth of Christ. It is not the constitutional duty of this or any other governmental body to command citizens to forego their universal constitutional right to human happiness, life, liberty, and property. And the exercise of power in this case should be restrained within proper limits. Alexander Hamilton despised the Bill of Rights, which, in its brilliant design, serves as a strong deterrent to arbitrary government power, and without it, we would not exist as a nation. It is central to constraining government to stay in its lane, in today's vernacular, by defending all Americans' rights against public servants' continued efforts to travel outside that lane. History is replete with governments' reckless driving over the freedoms and liberties of citizens. I believe our constitutional duty is providing clear, verifiable facts from trusted sources and suggest best practices for our citizens, and I support that wholeheartedly. With basic Judeo-Christian laws as the basis for our divinely inspired constitution, making us a country known for the rule of law, government's purpose is not to micromanage your religion, your property, your schools, your businesses, your health, and your life. I do not support this emergency ordinance that would require masks in select public places and for all employees in public establishments. I do support the right of citizens, merchants, and visitors in Greer to exercise their God-given freedom to make common sense decisions based on their individual situations, beliefs, and needs. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Others?
I won't be so eloquent for so long. But there's a few things I'd like to say.
Thank you.
Really not about a lot of facts or perceived facts. First, I want to say thank you to everyone who contacted me. I said it over and over again, people need to be involved, and with this particular situation, ordinance that we're taking up tonight, I believe that every person who contacted me, I'm back with them, and I believe that our Counsel has probably studied this more than any other ordinance or issue that has come before us. So whatever decision we make is not made without a lot of study, discussion, prayer. It's been said several times that common sense should direct individuals as to how they wear or if they wear a mask. A friend of mine contacted me the other day because I had asked everyone who could come up with facts, send them to me, and he didn't. He called me and said, "Listen, we really don't have any studies that would be helpful." But I served with this friend of mine on the fire department, and he said to him, it was like, as a fireman, we're given gear that allows us to go into a very dangerous environment. It will protect us from things that if you don't wear your protective gear, you know, it will severely injure you or it will kill you. Now, it does not do a fireman any good to put that gear on and have full confidence in that gear and run into an environment that is not tenable, an environment that is going to kill him and anybody who tries to come and rescue him. It does make sense for that fireman, firefighter. It does make sense for that fireman, firefighter, to don that gear and use his training, his intellect, his common sense to make that decision to enter that structure to do his duty. And I think most people, when it comes to wearing a mask, when they may feel that it best serves them, and maybe, and also the folks surrounding them, they will wear it. The last thing I'd like to say is that there were some individuals that spoke tonight, and I think somebody even mentioned that this was a forgone conclusion or decision that's our minds have been made up. You know, that's, that is the furtherest thing from the truth. And I am very disappointed in folks who contacted me who wanted to use threats to prove their point. "I'll never shop in Greer again if you pass this." That doesn't make sense, folks. People who try to make their point using a form letter that starts out, "I understand," or "There was a rumor that you're going to bring this up." And if you are, I'm very disappointed because you're trying to do it in an underhanded way. That's all wrong, and that's coming from me. So if there's anybody out there in our audience, anybody watching or listening to this in the many ways that you can, if you got a problem with that, contact me, and I'll be happy to talk to you.
Thank you, sir.
Well, I didn't want to follow that, so I thank you.
Thanks for breaking it up.
But come here, you'll see my little notes, and you'll compare them here. You will see the reason. But as Jay mentioned, and I think the majority of them have gone, I just wanted to thank the ones that had made phone calls to me and the ones that had sent the emails regarding the pros and cons of the face mask. And I certainly appreciate the ones that came out tonight and shared their concerns with us. Frankly, I'm not a person that really likes wearing the mask. If I go to an area, which most, I think most, the majority of people would do, if I go to an area or to a store and they have a sign, which there's one, a couple in Greer that have the sign, department stores, that a face mask is required. So, you know, I take my face mask out, and I put it on, and I go on, and I do what I need to do. Out at Haywood Mall, I ran into that same thing. And at one of the stores, they had people, they had a person there with mask and hand sanitizer and all that preused. Okay, I put the mask on. Went to one of the South Carolina beaches this past week, and, which has recently passed an ordinance to wear the face mask. I went to two restaurants, and they said, "Put the face mask on till you sit down. When you sit down, take the face mask off, and then put it back on when you leave." And then, of course, when you get out the door, you take it on. Went to one other restaurant, which was in the same vicinity as the others, and went to the door, and I said, "Do I need, do we need to put our face mask on before entering?" And they said, "No, just come on in." So, you know, you have conflicts regardless of where you go and what you do. The ones that, I guess that hit me the hardest was the ones that had emailed the facts about the grocery stores and pharmacy. I realize that in grocery stores and it is, restaurants have done an outstanding job of social distancing, as far as moving their tables, covering up certain areas, not letting you sit there. But when you do go into a grocery store, here, you know, regardless of which one you go into, their aisles are not so that you could possibly be six feet in distance. I'm not overly concerned about that. I haven't worn a mask in the grocery store yet, except when I was at the beach, and they had a requirement for you to do that. But I do know that in passing with your car, no one is certainly six feet away from each other. And I think the reason that the grocery store and the pharmacies hit me is because that's an essential destination for everyone, whether you have an underlying condition or chronically ill or whatever, you know, you can have it delivered, I guess. But most of us and probably the ones that are older, so used to going and getting their own things, so even, even at my age, I have not experienced anything like this. And it's, it's real sad time for our country, I will say that. And to see people walking around in masks and it just seems like maybe there's a ward went on, which we do kind of feel sometimes, that there is a ward went on somewhere within, within our nation, within our people. So there again, I think sometimes it does get to the political point, that sometimes it's overstressed, and it is a disease that they really do not know. And like everyone has said, they tell you this time, when it first started, you don't need a mask. And then they said, "Okay, only the ones, if you're sick, you need a mask." And then it came back around that maybe everybody needs a mask. And, you know, when they give all the statistics about the mask and the damage that they do to you internally, and they don't really protect anyone, then it makes you question, "Why, why are we going to wear masks?" And like I said, if anyone was sick, I could certainly see why they might wear the mask while they're out, to protect other people from them. So anyway, that's just kind of where I got to, and I was really impressed when the young business owner up there, because I had put that down in my notes here, that it would be, that I would like for it to be able for the businesses to check and talk with their employees when they come to work, monitor them for fevers, like he said, you know, that they did. And I know when I go into our office in Greer, you know, they kind of check your temperature there with the little gauge thing. So I think that's really important, and we think a lot of people, maybe some people say, "Okay, I don't feel good today," so they use that as a good excuse not to go to work. But there's a lot of people do, whether it's loyalty or whether it's the fact that I've got to pay my bills, you know, they're going to go to work, whether they're sick or not, so many times, and we know that, and not thinking about what may happen to someone else or what, you know? Because with this COVID, you don't know whether you got COVID or not. There's too many different symptoms for the COVID. And, you know, you see the list, you see the list, and then you'll see people that tested for the COVID, and they never knew they had it. So, you know, it's kind of hard to isolate the potentially sick from those that are not sick. So it's just a, it's a big mystery, as we all know. It is a big mystery. And I certainly pray that this mystery will soon go away, and I pray that we will find where the mystery came from and what source may be behind it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mayor and Council, I'd say just a few things as well myself. This is, as I know for all of us, this has been something over the last couple of weeks that I've really labored in my own mind about. At the outset, I'll say what we all know to be true already, and that may be fairly obvious. None of us chose this circumstance. None of us would have ever wanted this to happen. None of us would have ever been able to anticipate the circumstances that we find ourselves in. Going even further, this is not a simple matter. This is not a black and white, right and wrong, cut and dried type issue, in spite of, you know, you turn one television station on, you turn another television, and sometimes it's tried, it's tried to be made out to be that. And I think that goes to some of the political football and tool that, that we all know to be true in one form or another. The bottom line is, there's a lot of noise out there that not only we have had to wade through, but our constituents have had to wade through. And so really, that's, leads us to where we are tonight, as just trying to do the right thing for our families, for our businesses, for our community. None of us has all the answers, whether it's this particular issue or any of the other myriad of, of aspects of this issue. None of us knows the issues. It's already been mentioned, you know, this has been an evolving situation. And so here we are, just trying to do our best, and I want to acknowledge that, and I know that's, that's where we all find ourselves. I want to say, I feel like I clearly understand what's at stake, just thinking through in our, in our own situation. You all know that my wife and I own two small businesses here within about, oh, about a five-minute walk of where we sit today, one of which is highly dependent historically on meeting face-to-face with clients. Had my first face-to-face meeting with a client in about 90 days today. Completely changed the way that I do business, had to pivot that way. The other being a dine-in, food-service-oriented small business, that this should be the heavy season, the busy season. As soon as this all came down in March, completely has changed what we thought things would look like. No people coming in and out for six or seven weeks, and us struggling, just like so many businesses like us, to figure out, "How are we going to just keep going? How are we going to keep the doors open? How are we going to keep being a part of this downtown and this community that we love in this business?" You know, I have a 12-year-old son, who, we have a very uncertain school situation. On the drop, at the, you know, on a dime, had to stay home from school in the spring, still uncertain about the fall, as so many families are. Have an elderly father who will be 82 this December, who is a two-time survivor of stage IV cancer and is immune compromised due to chemotherapy. I understand there's these concerns that are, that are swirling about, that we all have our own set, we all have our own concerns, and as a result, we all have our own fears, we all have our own beliefs. And so, again, here we are, here we're set. As I thought through this, Roy, there's two aspects that I think I can break it down in my own mind for. There's a public health aspect, and again, if you ask 100 different people, maybe half of them are on four masks, half of them think masks do no good, but even those 50 on each side, they all have some nuance to those, to those beliefs. There's all, there's, there's many different opinions, no matter who you ask. For my own family, I do see potential merit and potential benefits for wearing a mask. I understand how small the virus is, but it is carried by water vapor, water droplets. And so whereas it's not a perfect solution, I don't think anybody is saying any of these solutions, whether it's washing your hands, whether it's a mask, whether it's hand sanitizer, none of these are perfect solutions potentially. But I think those who would say the masks have merit, say it's, it's one more tool in the quiver, and I understand that. Well, over two weeks ago, we had our kids at our shop here in downtown Greer begin wearing masks, if for no other reason to try, to try, one more thing, in addition to gloves and sanitizing and washing hands, and if for no other reason to make all of our guests as comfortable as possible when they come in to enjoy an experience with us. My wife and my son and I, we are wearing masks when we go to Walmart for groceries or, you know, 10 minutes into another store for, to pick something up. Based on our health, I don't necessarily feel like that is risking our health. Is it without risk? Of course not. But no, no action in our lives is without risk. And so weighing risk and reward, that's a choice that we're making for our own self. I think, I think there's very valid points that it's, it's possible that masks can help prevent the spread of COVID and other viruses. That's the public health aspect. The next part, the next piece of it is, what about us mandating a mask issue? we all agree with the basic right to self-determination, to make our own choices. Government is, serves its constituents best when it limits its intervention in our lives to actions that can potentially negatively affect our neighbor, whether that is their property, whether that's their health, whether that's their life. And I understand that that is the intention of an action like this, is not the folks that are sick, obviously, we would all agree that they need to stay home. If they do, for whatever reason, leave the house, they need to wear masks, they need to take all kinds of precautions. This type of action is for the folks who may be pre-symptomatic or asymptomatic, and I fully understand that. The trouble is, in my mind, an action like this, where we are mandating that you must wear this, whether you are exhibiting, even if you're not exhibiting symptoms, it's going to catch hopefully those folks who may be, may be carrying the virus and are pre-symptomatic or asymptomatic, but we are also mandating that, that action for folks who do not pose a threat to their neighbor. And obviously, the hard part in all this is we don't know who those folks who may be carrying the virus, and we don't know they are, and we don't know who genuinely is perfectly healthy and isn't carrying this. And so a mandate, whereas it may do some good, unfortunately, it is taking away choice from those folks who genuinely don't pose threats to their neighbor, taking away what I believe to be a basic right in our society of self-determination, sovereignty over our own bodies and our own health, unless we are a threat to our neighbor. And so for those reasons, I humbly would say that I don't support this measure. But very quickly, I would say that I do urge voluntary consideration of masks for our citizens, unless there's a health issue that would make those folks not be able to wear those masks safely. And then finally, I'd just simply say, you know, I appreciate the dialogue I've had with, with several of you and how respectful it is. I know we are not necessarily all of the same mind on this issue or any issue, but I appreciate the fact that we care about one another and we care about our community, and even when we disagree about something even as important as this, we can love each other and respect each other and be kind to each other. And so finally, for anyone who may be here in the audience, for anyone who may be watching via the, the livestream, otherwise, you know, come in contact with our comments. I would just, just say, these are days where, as a community, as a society, we need to be kind to one another, and we need to strive to move past the name-calling, the presumptuous of, you know, of bad motives, and strive to respect one another and love one another, even in issues like this.
Thank you.
Well, my feelings on the thing, let me say this first, that I appreciate all the emails that we received and that, and I know I've grown a little bit because there's a couple of emails I know when I done a few years ago. I can appreciate that growth, and I promise you, you can appreciate that growth too. But the one email that really stuck in my craw was the one that said that, that we do underhanded things and we do sneaky things, is basically what it was saying. And I promise you, that's not how we operate. You know, that, that's not how we operate. If you listen, we don't operate like that. We come out and everybody's allowed to say what they want to say, and we do it in a respectful manner, as, as it should be. We don't do things that are on the table. I don't know what you're used to or where you came from, but in the city of Greer, we don't do that. And I want to state that the virus is the reason for the, for the face mask ordinance, is because we have a virus, and science is the reason that we know that it is, is a virus. And I know it's been said that, "Well, it's changing." Yeah, it's changing because science changes. When you find out the virus is acting this way today, then you know, that's the way it's acting today. And if it evolves and it changes again, it changes like that. There's no absolutes, and there will never be absolute viruses. This virus, COVID-19, is here today, there'll be another virus tomorrow that will cripple, and what cripples the economy is fear. And it's been said that the media, yeah, you can find any kind of media you want to find. You can find media that scares you, you can find media that enlightens you. But what I like most about the media is that we live in a country where we're free to listen to the media. We don't have to be forced fed media that the elites want you We don't have to be forced fed media that the elites want you to have, you know, this is what the story is today. You got, you're free to read, and I know this all kind of media, print, TV, whatever, if you don't like it, change the channel. You keep changing, you're gonna find something that agrees with what you, what you're thinking. But I promise you, the virus don't care one way or the other. It doesn't care one way or the other. And it's been said, don't trample on my rights. Well, the way I feel about rights is, your rights end where my rights begin. You know, there was a time when we had the right to smoke in this room. Somebody set a mandate, nah, you shouldn't smoke in the room. And there was a time when people didn't like that because you're trampling on my rights. There again, your rights end where my rights begin. And Pete, with, they passed a law that says you can't, can't smoke in the building. Same thing with motor oil, we just dumped motor oil down the drain, dumped it plenty of years. Somebody came along with a mandate and said, hey, brother, can't dump that motor oil down the drain no more, it's not good. You know what I'm saying? Hey, that's what we used to do. Well, it evolved. It evolved. Yeah, it does. It, it changed. We can't never get to the point where we say, that's it. It ain't never gonna happen. Things are always gonna, gonna evolve, always gonna evolve. It's the same way as he says, I got an 88-year-old father, and the reason I wear the, the face mask in there is because I don't want to carry nothing back to him. We live in a society now, I know you're saying that there's 130,000 deaths, and we act like it ain't nothing, you know? It ain't nothing until it's one, somebody that's close to you in your family that dies, then the game changes. It changes then. It does, that's somebody, and it's the same thing with, with, with the kids, you know? Don't tell me 0.2% of the kids are gonna die or whatever, you know? Uh-uh. No, we, we, we gotta protect our, our children, they're our most valuable resource. 25% of our population, but 100% of our future. And, and it shouldn't be taken lightly. No, like when people just arbitrarily say, well, oh, well, if they die, so what? It's, it's part of, it's part of the thing. The economy is, is, is much better. You ain't gonna solve that economy until you solve your medical problem, because people are scared, they're scared to go shop and that, because it's the unknown. It's the unknown, and then until we figure out a way, I, I look at a, a country like, like Taiwan, 24 million people, 400 cases, seven deaths. 24 million people, 400 cases, seven deaths. They doing something right. They doing something right. But we gotta get to the point where people talk about sacrificing and, and freedoms, and we don't know nothing about sacrificing. Latte, $8 lattes, don't you stop me from, you know what I'm saying? That's, that's where we are. We don't care nothing about our fellow man, we're, we're commanded to love. I got that from one of our coun- council people today, and we are, we're commanded to love. And once we're commanded to love, that's how we gonna solve that, that virus problem, because we gonna think about something bigger than ourselves. See, we come from World War II generations that were people really sacrificing. Depression, my grandma ain't throw nothing away. Granny ain't throw nothing away because she said, you might need it. But see, today, we don't, we don't live like that today, you know? We don't know nothing about sacrifice. Sacrifices, you can't tell me what to do, boss. You know what I'm saying? Get out my face, you know? And, and even down to the point where, you know, now we armed and packing, get in my face and see what I do for you. You know what I'm saying? Like it's almost, I'd love to shoot you, try me. You know, but we, we have got to start to think about something that, that's, that's bigger, bigger than us. We got to. And if we don't, we gonna be, we gonna be doomed from now, because this ain't the last virus that's gonna come along. It's not the last one. And if we don't get a game plan and learn how to, how to deal with it, we gonna be back here again. And who knows what it is next time, because death changes things. You got 130,000 this time, if you get another one, like you said before about, I could, if you had a million or two billion deaths today, they, people would absolutely lose their mind, you know? There again, you got people that even walk into a store today and purposely cough on somebody, you know, just because. You got teenagers, young people having COVID parties, trying to see if they can catch the virus. I don't get it. Maybe I, maybe I missed something somewhere, but I, I just don't get that. I saw the one where the young girl said that she made a mistake, and she told her before she died that she didn't take it seriously. And I think that comes with, you know, with how our, our society is, is today, you know? And I support the ordinance, and I support the ordinance because I want to do something that's bigger than me, and that's the thing about leadership. Leadership is about doing things that are hard sometimes, you know what I'm saying? It's about taking charge and telling somebody, we need to do this for the greater good of our society, and that's why I support it. And I thank you guys for the debate, and I, I thank you for, just Gris City Council, you, you know I love my councilman, you know? Even if we go ahead and, you know what I'm saying? We go ahead, but at the end of the day, we move on to, to the next thing. Everybody has their say, and we do what we think is right, and we move on. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
You have the last one?
Yeah, you goofed. The one after Wayne now.
Go ahead. Mr. Griffin brought up a, a good point. I haven't, I haven't thought about this until, you know, the words that he just spoke, and he said, uh, he talked about sacrifice, and it made me think about, um, the value of life that, uh, that we've taken for granted. I, I talked to, uh, an elderly gentleman, actually, uh, bought my house from him years ago, he's, he moved to another, uh, spot. I've been a city councilman the entire time, it's been great serving, and I still talk to him. He's, um, he's in his 90s now, but he's been trapped at an assisted-living facility since mid-March. Can't see his family, and can't talk to his friends. Uh, he can talk to them, but can't physically see them, can't go to church. And, you know, he told me something that, that really, that hit me hard and stuck with me. He said, he said, you know, Lee, he said, I'm, I'm 90, I think Mr. Williams said he's 92-years-old, 93-years-old, and he said, there's, uh, there's more important things in life than trying to prevent the spread of this virus. He said, we've got to continue living. He said, we don't know how many days we've got left on this earth. And he said, I am missing out on, he said, my days are so precious right now, and he said, I, I, I just want to get out of here, I just want to live, and I just, um, I just want to enjoy life and experience that again. And it, and it really touched me, and I thought about that, um, with my, what Mr. Griffin said. I do want to thank, um, all my friends. I, I think I started a, I've heard the term war come up several times. I started a, um, a passionate debate on Facebook the other night. I asked my friends what they thought about this mask ordinance, and many of you are friends with me, and maybe you've seen it, and it was a knock-down, drag-out. It's kind of like, it reminded me of like a Clemson-Carolina debate, because have you ever tried, like a Clemson, I see your Clemson shirt, you ever tried to convince a Carolina fan to pull for, you know, or vice versa? It doesn't work, right? And that's what, uh, in one, uh, situation, there was actually a house divided. There was a husband and wife having an argument on my Facebook page in the comments about their positions about this. And so I started looking at it like that, and I started thinking, uh, this is a, this is a, this is something where a lot of us are very much split on. I started reading Tale of Two Cities with Charles Dickens the other night, and, uh, it reminds me of that, it's like the best of times and the worst of times. I mean, you've got so many people fighting and in conflict with each other, and, uh, I think, speaking specifically to this ordinance though, I, I struggle with, uh, shoppers at, at grocery and pharmacy. I mean, in my experience, and I've been several times, I feel like there's plenty of room and, and a lot of opportunity for people to spread out and to do their business, uh, and, uh, and to feel safe doing that. As far as the, the piece on the restaurant, retail salons, barber shops, and then back into the grocery and pharmacy requiring staff to wear masks, I think there's so much debate here tonight, I'm not, I'm not sure we know the answer. Should they be wearing masks, or shouldn't they be wearing masks? If they feel compelled to wear masks, feel free to do it. I'm, I'm very sensitive, uh, I'm telling you what I learned about, uh, folks in this process, there are a lot of immunocompromised people, there are a lot of sick people, there are a lot of people that are, that are challenged with, uh, with their respiratory system, and I support that decision for them to wear masks 100% and encourage that. But I really struggle with telling people they have to, because there is so much misinformation out there, and it's, and it's hard to decide, uh, which way to go on this. And I love what Mr. Griffin said, I do love that we're free to go out there and to, and to seek out the, the answer, but I'm not sure it's there right now. And so, um, also with the challenges of the exceptions that we noted in the, in the ordinance, and with the difficulty in forcing this ordinance, I'm, I'm not going to be in support of it tonight.
Thank you, sir. You have, um, this council speak, and I think that you probably have judged from the comments that, uh, that you have heard tonight, that, um, this debate is certainly heartfelt. I think it's, uh, it's been thoughtful. Um, it, it's obviously been passionate. And What you've also heard tonight is, is a reflection of the voices of our community, which is good, since this is an issue that affects us as a community. Unlike many of the issues that we face, which oftentimes have more significant impact to a particular district or, or maybe even area, this is one of those decisions that affects us as a whole. This is similar to a discussion about taxes or fees or services. This discussion cannot be made in a vacuum based on council district. Add to that the way this issue has polarized our community, even the nation, we find ourselves making a difficult decision tonight. I know that it's a difficult decision, because I have struggled with this mildly myself. As you have heard several people say tonight, for every point, there is a counterpoint. For every argument, there is a counterargument, and for every YouTube clip, there's a counter YouTube clip. Even our most trusted medical advisors are having to change their advice based on continuing new research discoveries. While there are so many unknowns and gray areas in this debate, I have worked to compress my decision to a simple premise. Do our personal choices and opinions outweigh the public good? I have considered the arguments of constitutional rights, but find no argument there, since every day we deal with our rights being restricted when they impair or fringe on others or our community at large. I have considered the science of masks versus no mask, and as I mentioned earlier, there seems to be two separate camps, both potentially valid on this issue. What I can't deny is that, however, you choose to count the number of cases in South Carolina, they are growing exponentially, and it appears that we are moving from a public health crisis to a public health disaster. I also think there are many things about this potentially dangerous virus that we don't understand, and we can't allow ourselves to be lured into the false sense of complacency. I realized I wasn't alone in this dilemma, when last week, the Major League Baseball Umpires Union couldn't come to an agreement about working the upcoming season. A home plate umpire makes hundreds of split-second decisions and calls in a game, and yet they can't figure out whether they're gonna work or not. So the question to me is to mask or not to mask, and I find myself making that decision in the most unlikely of ways. Watching a documentary about a Medal of Honor winner from the Vietnam War. For those of us that remember, we find ourselves in eerily similar times when we compare the latter stages of the war in Vietnam to the current COVID-19 pandemic. The number of deaths are similar, the nation is polarized by particular, by political party, there is civil unrest, and the country is divided. But it is a Medal of Honor recipient by the name of Sergeant Gary B. Kirch that brought clarity to my decision, watching a TV show. Sergeant B. Kirch joined the Army in 1967, completing his basic training at Fort Dix, New Jersey. He attended Ranger School in Fort Benning, Georgia, and completed Phase 1 and Phase 2 of Special Forces Training at Fort Bragg, North Carolina. As a member of the Green Berets, B. Kirch served in the 3rd, 5th, and 10th Special Forces Group as a light weapons and medical specialist. On April 1st, 1970, Sergeant B. Kirch and the men of Company B of the 5th Special Forces Group stationed at a camp in central highlands Vietnam came under attack by a numerically superior North Vietnamese force. Sergeant B. Kirch manned a mortar until the weapon was disabled by enemy fire, at which time he moved forward to take over a machine gun nest for a wounded comrade. And Sergeant B. Kirch learned of the superior officer that lay wounded in even a more forward position, he didn't hesitate to run through enemy fire to rescue the man. While pulling the officer to safety, he was hit by shrapnel and partially paralyzed. For the remainder of the battle, Sergeant B. Kirch had two Vietnamese soldiers carry him from one wounded soldier to another. He was shot in the side while giving mouth-to-mouth resuscitation to a fighter, and despite his wound, continued providing medical attention to his fellow soldiers. Finally, shot through the stomach, Sergeant B. Kirch picked up a weapon and fought off the enemy until he passed out from lack of blood. Evacuated by helicopter, Sergeant B. Kirch spent six months in hospital recovery from his wounds. And Sergeant B. Kirch was awarded his Medal of Honor in the White House in October of 1973. He was asked by a reporter, why, when he was so gravely wounded, did he continue to seek to help others? His reply was simple, direct, and straightforward. He quoted First John 3:1618. "By this way we know love, that he laid down his life for us, and we ought to lay down our lives for others. But if anyone has plenty and sees a brother in need, yet closes his heart to him, how could God possibly abide in him? Little children, do not show love in word or talk only, but in your deeds and in your Words are cheap, suggestions are easy, and I'm certainly not asking anybody here to lay down your life, just put on a mask for somebody else's good. Are we too vain? Are we too self-centered? Or do we just not care about other people? If we really care about others, we'll show it through our actions. If you love this community, no, if you love the people of this community as much as I do, I would ask you to vote yes this evening on this ordinance. Ms. Duncan, could you call the question, please, ma'am?
Mr. Aaron?
No.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
No.
Mr. Williams?
No.
Mr. Bettis?
No.
Ms. Alfred?
No.
Mayor again?
Yes.
Counsel, we will move to the first and final reading of Resolution 20-2020. This is a resolution encouraging individuals to wear face masks covering certain circum- in certain circumstances and matters related thereto. It's requested by Mr. Bettis. I'll entertain a motion that it be received.
So moved.
Take a second.
Have a motion and second. Floor is open for discussion.
Mayor and counsel, I requested this as the alternative to a mandate. The basic change in it is, is you're not required, you are encouraged to wear masks and other safety measures, and I believe this is the proper way to do it, and I would wholeheartedly support any campaign- any campaign that the city would put together to emphasize encouraging people to wear a mask when it is your choice to do so.
Others?
I feel like it should be the retailer that owns stores throughout the country, that they should do their own rules and regulations as far as requiring a mask. I know that there are a couple that do specify that, and I know that there are some that was governed by the Grebel City Council, too. But, you know, I do not resent anyone wearing a mask, and I have a friend that's very afraid of this COVID, and she does not even hardly want to go out of the house because of it. But, you know, when she does go out, she does wear her mask. So, you know, I feel like it's up to you. I mean, you know, if I was sick, I would stay home. I mean, you know, a couple of weeks ago, I was told by my doctor to attend the council meeting. So, you know, I stayed home. So I would encourage anyone that is sick, and, you know, you're not quite sure of what the sickness is, that you do take precautions against your fellow man. We are here, you know, each individual. And as he said, you know, we're here to love each other and try to grow together. And so everyone should have their choice about the mask. I have no resentment about anyone wearing a mask. And I know the other day I was told in some grocery store, some woman that wasn't, some woman that was wearing a mask yelled at some woman that was wearing a mask, and they got into a heavy dispute right there at the grocery store. So I don't think any of that should be taking place. I think we should all just let everyone, you know, do what they feel for their own safety and their own concerns to wear the mask.
Others?
I suppose that I wonder a bit in light of a difficult decision that we've all labored over that actually had teeth one way or another to compel members of our community to have to do something one way or another. I wonder if we really have much more impetus to even necessarily have an official position as a body on on this. There's a very real sense in which it feels for myself a bit disingenuous to make a difficult decision that we've all had to make, but then say in some official capacity. But we really think you should consider this. Again, as Mayor said, I think it's a matter of trying to put our neighbor above ourself, to love others, to have charity. I'm not, I'm just not so sure that this really does anything for myself.
One other thing I will say, since y'all borrowed up the email from the constituent or the party that was saying things about the council. If you haven't looked, she did send an apology on that.
Others?
I'm kind of with Mr. Hopper on this. He's talking about us taking a kind of an official position. And, you know, it says to encourage folks in grocery stores and pharmacies and, you know, to wear face coverings. I think, based on the discussion that we've had, it's it's kind of maybe to your point, I'm not sure if we're qualified to make that recommendation. And I think what Judy's saying is that it's a personal choice, and it's based on so much research, and there's so much information out there. It seems to kind of come down to what I believe is the right thing for me and my family. But I do like that the resolution does point out that if you're in situations with others and you feel like they may be threatened, that that gives you the option to put that mask on to support them. So you do have the ability to do that. So I'm really torn on this one. Not as much as the last one, but definitely kind of a little confused as our official position on this particular resolution.
For us to speak as a body, I would feel most comfortable if we were taking an action that was actually going to move the needle in one direction or the other in the current circumstance. I just don't necessarily see this as something that moves the needle to change someone's mind, compel their action, you know, even though we haven't, you know, done in the form of an ordinance. So, again, once again, I understand the spirit and intent of a resolution such as what Spartanburg County did. I understand the spirit of even a resolution such as this. I just don't necessarily, after having made a difficult call that I know made some of our community happy and others not so happy, you know, in our last vote, I'm just not so sure I feel compelled to wade into a toothless resolution on the same matter.
I appreciate the intent. I think I think that's the request to put it out there is certainly warranted. I do struggle with what I perceive this to be as feel-good legislation is. And, you know, we take lots of votes, and there are always winners and losers. Sometimes you're on one side of it or the other. But as you have heard several times this evening, the minute we move to the next item, we are done here. I just I won't support the resolution, not out of bitterness that the vote did not go my way, simply that I see this as a self-congratulatory or patting on the back of ourselves for not taking action. And so it's not that I don't encourage people to wear masks, obviously. But I just, for the Resolution 20-2020, I'll I'll vote no.
Others? We clear? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Aaron Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Britton?
No.
Mr. Hoster?
No.
Mr. Viewman?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Anaffler?
Yes.
Mayor Dan?
No. All right, counsel. You're still with us? Let's, uh... Counsel is 9:15. We've got six matters to consider in regards to zoning matters. I know we've got some staff here. I know we've still got some folks here with us in regards to some of those. We're going to stand in recess for five minutes exactly, and then we're going to reconvene. We're going to resume the meeting. Thank you for rejoining us here. We're going to take up at Item C of new business. This will be the first reading of ordinance number 29-2020. This is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of property owned by Mark III Properties located on North Howell Road by 100% petition and to establish a zoning classification of DRD for said property. Ordinance 2920, as you will see by the explanation there, is fairly lengthy. We will ask Mr. Matt Mahan to join us for this discussion and give us an overview of ordinance 29-2020, sir.
Thank you, Mayor and counsel. This is an annexation request for a portion of a parcel. As you see right here on this map, this is the entire parcel right here. This is the part that is already a part of this property. This part we hear was bought in 2015. The owner of the property at that time combined it with the property, but did not bring it into the city. So that's why, it's kind of a weird one, so we wanted to make sure we explain that upfront, why it's kind of an annexation and a rezoning, as you'll see on the next ordinance. This is a DRD request to allow for up to 750 units. It will have four entrances on North Howell. The remainder will have access on Gap Creek. The density is roughly 3.16 units per acre. That density would fall between an R-12 and R-15, just to kind of give you perspective of where it would fall. There will be a minimum of two material requirements, such as vinyl, hardy plank. They'll have to have a combination of two of those materials. This is a plan development that will take over seven to 10 years. This project currently, it went to our Planning Advisory Committee, which is made up of city staff. It's made up of Greer CPW, SC DOT, the school district, and outside agencies that are impacted by these projects. This meeting was held on the 28th of May. DOT is going to require a traffic study. We will get a preliminary study with that, but they will have to do a final study once everything is kind of worked out with school and all that, when it gets back in session somehow. They will have to meet all those requirements that DOT will put on them. The school district also had real no major concern because it's a seven-to-10-year build-out. They fill their capacity, they have plenty of capacity in the schools that are going to be serviced by this subdivision. This will have to go back to Planning Commission for an FDP. So there will be the road alignment issue that we will have to address once SC DOT and the developer come to an agreement on that issue with what road improvements will be required. This is just kind of a breakdown of the building material that we're going to have associated with this. They'll have stormwater pine, but I would like to go back to this. So they do have a ton of open space in this project. The developer is willing, we own a small strip right here next to Greer High School for a future, you know, potential walking path plan that I believe Recreation is working on. They're trying to look at figuring out a way to align access. So people from this subdivision, if that were to come, you know, to fruition, they would be able to have that access directly across from their subdivision.
Is that the marshland you was talking about?
Yeah, that's what I was wondering.
It's roughly right around here, I believe, sir.
Is it that big? Was that flood plain?
There is, I believe, a little flood plain that is further, it's down this way. There is a pond on the property, so they'll have to get with, I believe, the Corps of Engineers and DEHAC to figure out how they're going to handle that. They do address that in their statement of intent, that whatever improvements are required will be maintained by that subdivision in the HOA.
Did that gentleman know that there was going to have to be a traffic study when he talked to us?
Yes, sir. We explained that at our Planning Commission meeting, yes, sir.
But he felt like he needed to tell us anyway?
Yes, sir. The public hearing was held on the 22nd. Planning Commission does make a recommendation of approval. We'll be happy to answer any question that you may have, and the engineer for the project is also here.
Thank you. For the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
The motion.
Second.
A motion in a second? Motion is made by
Didn't carry. I said it. I'm sorry.
Yes.
Whoever, who was the second?
Got coughed out.
Yeah, I kind of got coughed out.
You can give it to whoever you want to.
Okay.
We're clear?
Yeah. Now, with this vote tonight, Brendan, it is just saying to take it back to the Planning Commission for the second time for y'all to do the traffic study and things like that. Is that correct?
No, ma'am. This is to annex.
Oh, we're annexed.
This is to annex this portion, but also to assign that DRD zoning. And the statement of intent will apply. This is the first read. We kind of treated this one a little different because it is a portion of a property that's already in the city. So we didn't want to bring this to you for first reading before Planning Commission, go to Planning Commission, and then bring all of it back. We wanted to have it all as one package, so it'd be easier to kind of understand. The next ordinance is the remainder of the four parcels. But this is to rezone the property to DRD and then approve the statement of intent. And then, when we take it back to Planning Commission for the FDP, that will approve the layout of the subdivision and all road alignments.
Can you go back to kind of helping us understand where the roads are again?
On here?
On there, please.
So you'll have one right here up towards that, I believe.
Is that Howell?
This is Howell right here. This is Gap Creek.
Okay.
So you'll have one entrance here. This is a townhome section. This is the single-family section. This townhome section will have one access off North Howell and one access off Gap Creek.
I think the challenge with this, I mean, it's just the density of this, there's going to be so many units. And then where that road comes into Gap Creek, I mean, are they just suggesting that it's just going to be a stop sign and a left and a right turn at this point?
I do not know what the exact extent what DOT is going to require them to do, because we have not seen that study. But they will have to study that intersection, and I believe they will at least have to study Country Club intersection, if not further. But the improvements that DOT will require, I mean, it could be traffic light, it could be stop sign, could be roundabout, could be that there is no improvement needed.
And it's going to make the intersection at Gap Creek and Country Club Road a mess. I mean, it's already kind of a mess in the morning. And what Mr. Weston was talking about when he spoke earlier, he was, I think he's saying that the challenge with the traffic study right now is if we conduct it, that it's not going to be able to mimic the real effects of having school.
And DOT, yes, sir.
It will?
DOT is accounting for that. They're letting them to kind of do a preliminary traffic study, but DOT has requirements where they're going to have to do kind of a final traffic study to get the numbers as best they can. Currently with school, we don't know when it's going to start back, so I think once August, September gets here, DOT is going to have to reevaluate how they how they make those decisions. I believe they have preliminary numbers from other projects that they could possibly use for this area.
What what did you say about the pond that's on the side?
There's a pond. Whatever improvements that DEHAC or the Corps of Engineers will require, they'll have to get that done. And then the HOA and the subdivision itself will have to maintain that.
So they're going to preserve the pond?
That is my understanding. Yes, sir.
Let's call the engineer for it. I didn't catch his name. Yeah, you'll come to the podium, please, sir. As you will ask.
I'll just kind of touch on a couple of, I'll try to be quick and brief. I know it's been a long night. My name is Paul Harrison. I work with Blue Water Civil Design. We're the civil engineer for this project. Just to kind of briefly touch on the DOT stuff. We have been in extensive talks with DOT about this development. We already have a scope from them, and we know we will have to study Gap Creek and Country Club Road. We'll already, we'll have to study our intersection at North Howell and Gap Creek. Obviously, all of our access points. And they're also making us go down to Jug Factory and 14, is that 14? Jug Factory and 14, so they're making us go all the way. And I have the preliminary traffic study in hand. The reason we were able to conduct a preliminary study was because we did Oakton subdivision right next door, which it's actually shown on this, on this map. And we had some preliminary numbers that we could use from that study, as well as our proposed units for our development. And we used a 4% growth rate for the area. But we have committed to, DOT wants us to come back when school is in session and finalize that permit at that point in time. Our initial traffic study numbers show improvements at, and these could be lighted intersections, at Country Club and Gap Creek. Major improvements at North Howell and Gap Creek. Improvements to the intersection at Jug Factory and Highway 14. Left turn movements into our access or onto North Howell, and then a left turn movement into the school parking at our other access, as well as improvements along North Howell, too. So you're talking major, major road improvements that will be a part of this process or this development and will be permitted through DOT during that encroachment permit process.
What about the pedestrian piece? Is there any, is there any way that we could safely get people out of these neighborhoods?
What we
Or is it considered one neighborhood?
What we want to do, yeah.
Across the street to the school? I mean, I'm guessing there's going to be a lot of
What we want to do is try to permit a pedestrian crossing somehow from our development directly over to the school and incorporate that into the property that you guys own for potential to get to the park and to maybe a future trail system that's in the works. So we want to play into all of that for this development. So we want to play into all of that for this development.
Is there any commercial development that's going to be?
No, no, no commercial.
I thought that was only original, original plan.
Well, I just think that once this happens, and how large is that project y'all working on right next door?
It's, don't hold me to it, I think it's maybe 120 lots.
Right. I mean, that, it's gonna, I think it's going to push some commercial up there.
I think my route would be helpful is that improvement at Jug Factory and 14. That's a-
That's where you commercial?
Yeah. Yeah, there was already some commercial there plus the improvement for that intersection. That's, that's all that I've been thinking ever since the school began.
I think one of the things that's important to note, and you certainly can add to this conversation, Mr. Harrison, you know, one of the things that I think is truly misunderstood about the traffic study is that I think a lot of people simply think that it's a car count. And a traffic study by its very nature considers counts, but it also considers the condition of the roads, the intersections, the number of accidents that have take place in that area, the shoulder, the width of the turning lane. I mean, there is, the traffic study itself basically provides a rating and an insight into traffic issues more so than it does, here's just a list of people that, or a number of cars that travel on this road and, you know, here's what we're going to do about it. There's a lot more to the traffic, to a traffic study than simply trying to figure out how many cars you've got.
That's correct. And just to give you an example, we're having to capture a lot of the other new developments that are just underway, that may not have people living in. We're having to incorporate those into the traffic study as well, as well as put a 4% growth rate on the area. So we're actually projecting out 10 years and looking at a average growth rate over the, over a 10-year period. So these are very, very high numbers that we're taking into consideration, which is why you see a lot of the recommendations of improvements to a lot of these intersections, roads, and whatnot. Nowadays, it's pretty much a, if you're going to do something this big, you might as well budget traffic, you know, remediation upfront. It's just a fact of life.
One other thing I see on this, on this piece of land here is a lot of water. And the wetland thing came up. I just wonder, you know, are these, all these ponds on here, are these spring fed? And I just wonder if there's some underground springs and different things that they're going to be running into as they develop this property? And do they even look into something like, you know, I guess the groundwater levels? Or if there's anything that's going to be disturbed when they go in there?
Absolutely. We're having a, currently, we're having a wetlands delineation done on the property. So we got an environmentalist who's out flagging all of the wetlands on the property. So we'll steer clear of all of those areas. We've basically taken those into consideration with this green area and some of these fingers that come up in here. And, I mean, this is, this is definitely not a flat piece of property. It's got some heavy topo on it, it's got some low-lying areas, some streams, some flood plain. And then the existing lake, I don't know if you guys, how familiar you are with this lake. I've kind of got a history to it. 10 years ago, 15 years ago, we were approached by a developer that was going to develop a small portion of this property. And that lake is actually, it's a regulated dam by DEHAC. And it's had issues for years and years. And I think, I think your, probably your golf course is seeing some of those issues right now because that lake feeds into your golf course downstream. So it's got some erosion problems. And it, and it's, you know, one of the things that, one of the first things that we have to do is we have to do improvements to that dike that, or to that dam that have been a problem for many years.
And that's the body of water that's on that property, correct?
It's called, to my knowledge, that's, it's called Moon Lake.
What'd you call it?
Do what now?
What did you call it?
Moon Lake.
Oh, moon, okay.
Yeah, and that is a, I mean, you're looking at 300 and something acres of property. That's a substantial lake.
That's basically the low point of the property as well, too.
Well, there's a draw that kind of feeds through here.
It goes uphill from there.
That's right, that's right. It goes uphill. And then this, this central area in here is kind of the high point. This is high, and obviously, this is high. This is low area, and then around here, low area.
But you're saying that some water is getting out of that pond and getting into the, maybe it's coming into the golf course under, maybe under 11, under the road right there?
No, I'm just saying there's some erosion that's taking place downstream of that pond that's just natural erosion of the creek beds and stuff, maybe due to some insufficient outlet devices associated with that pond that need to be, I just know it's an ongoing problem because I worked on, I worked on a solution for it 10 years ago.
Others?
Is that not going to create a lot of possible flooding for those houses and all that are right there at it?
Actually, what we would do to the pond to remediate that would be to lower the pond, lower the level of the pond. And we would have a, we would put designed outlet devices in it that would help out with the amount of water that downstream properties are currently receiving. So I think it would naturally improve the situation.
With all that water and marshland or something, is there not a way that, that would be feasible for them to reduce the number of units? I mean, you know, 750, that's a lot of houses in one area, you know?
I think it's 237.
Oh, I was thinking, I was, I was thinking, yeah. It's a huge tract of land. Just to give you, for instance, we got, we got $3 million worth of water upgrades we got to do before we put the first shovel in the ground to serve this community. So you, you, there's a lot of money that has to be spent. And, you know, you take the price of the land, the dam improvements, waterline improvements, road improvements, and you factor all of those in. And then just the development of the lots alone, you know, we pretty much settled into this density, not trying to get too many, but you got to have enough to satisf-
To get too many, get something back.
To make it a worthwhile adventure, or either my clients are just gonna, you know, it's not a, it's too risky to take the, to take the risk to try to develop something like this.
Well, this is probably a case where development to some extent is going to help that situation somewhat because on the other side of Howell Road, you've got a bigger, quote unquote, pond lake than even is on this piece of property. I mean, it looks large on that, on that drawing, but it's not nearly as big as this room in terms of the actual size of it for the most part. And you've got a much larger one on the other side that is, just for lack of a better word, a beaver dam basically that's backed up water over there. And then you've got another, at least lake or two in some of those, in front of some of those residences that goes down towards where it comes under and goes down to the golf course. So, you know, we're bigger actually, and probably in terms of what's coming to that pond from above is going to help regulate some of what takes place above and below that piece of property.
I hope part of your project is to get that fixed.
I'm sure, I'm sure we'll be dealing with it in the permitting stage. You know, just, I'll make one more statement and I'll shut up. But, you know, you take Oakton and, you know, you look at this thing at first glance and you say, oh, my gosh, that's a lot of lots. It is a lot of lots, I agree with you. But it's also a much bigger tract of land than we're typically dealing with. If I was just to break this up into five different parcels and do five different Oaktons or six different Oaktons, at the end of, at the end of the day, I'm coming up with the same number of units. It's just, this gives us an ability to plan it, to work with Brandon and his staff, and to do something that's unique and different, and also solve some potential existing issues on the property right now. And that property's sat there for a while. I've worked on it several times, but this client has been the most serious about it so far, so.
I guess that 750 is probably about equal to what's going on across from Woodland Elementary over there with all that noise?
Oh, at Suddeth.
Yeah, in Suddeth Farm.
Brandon, you said R-12 or 15?
I think it would, it would fall between an R-12 and R-15.
Seven to 10 year build out, do you have any idea the timeline of different phases and the numbers and what that looks like potentially?
Yeah, currently, we're thinking three different phases with each phase providing a different product. So we want to provide some attached product and some detached product in each, each and every phase. And we also have different lot sizes for the detached product as well. So technically, you know, there's going to be three to four different price points. So you're probably looking at three years per phase, two years per phase. It's probably going to take a year to get everything permitted, a year to build it, then you start your building. And from that point on, we're thinking seven to eight more years to final build out.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time.
Brandon, I did have one more question.
Yes, sir.
About the pond and our, I don't, I don't remember us dealing with a parcel of land where there's such a large pond like this. I mean, what type of, do we do any type of investigation as far as that's concerned, as far as?
Our stormwater engineer is requiring, I believe, the wetland study. And that, he will have to review that along with DEHAC to get an approval for what's going to have to be done to that pond.
Okay, so that'll kind of be included in the stormwater piece?
Yes, sir.
For retention ponds and everything else as well? I mean, is there a chance that they would do that pond kind of like what we have out here where it's more of a, isn't this detention pond instead of a retention pond? How that worked, or was it vice versa?
You have a retention pond.
We have a retention pond.
You want water in.
Right, right.
The retention pond's more of a dry pond, so it'll drain out over a period of time and remain dry for most of the time. Moon Lake is a substantial pond, it will keep, it'll have water in it. I mean, we want it to be a nice feature like you have back behind your facility here.
I don't think you want to encourage it to be done away with.
No, I'm not encouraging, I just wanted to be, make sure it's right when it comes into the city.
Well, I think you mentioned that DEHAC-
It's a DEHAC dam.
Yeah, so they're, they're-
So it's really kind of up to them then?
Yeah, so I think they've, obviously, already identified some issues that's going to happen.
Gotcha, thank you.
Yeah, I was well aware of those. Now, as far as the adjoining properties, as was addressed, I'm sure there'll be boundaries or some type of-
Yes, ma'am, technically, around all DRDs of this size, it's a 25-foot boundary. But the way they're doing the majority of this, I mean, they're going to have hundreds upon hundreds of feet along the property that I believe the gentleman was speaking about earlier.
And that, that, of course, is the combination of two properties that you're talking about. The reason, the-
The total, the total number of parcels is four for the entire project, yes, ma'am.
Questions?
Not only, other thing would be, I guess, since he brought up the golf course, I was kind of wondering about the, so many times when there's new construction and all going on, it does cause runoffs into adjoining properties, which we've experienced several times. So I'm just wondering with this layout and the surrounding properties and even our newly acquired golf course, as to what impact, if any, they might see on that?
So our stormwater team, what they'll require is a silt fence to probably go around wherever they're grading. If there's any breaches in that silt fence, they inspect that, I believe, monthly. But also, if they get a complaint, they go out that day and they'll have to make repairs. If it, you know, gets mud on the road, they'll have to clean the roads. So our stormwater team does a very good job of making sure there's very little impact from new development on existing properties.
Further discussion? Here, Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Alford?
I'm kind of, I'm kind of torn on it, I'm sorry. But I will, based on the fact of the marshland and my concerns with the water and erosion, I'll go with this one.
Counsel, let's move to ordinance number 30-2020. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of a portion of properties owned by Michael Bruce and a portion of properties owned by Gap Creek LLC located on North Howell Road and Gap Creek Road from R-12 Single Family Residential and C-2 Commercial to a DRD district. Mr. Mattman?
Yes, sir, this is the remainder of the parcels. As you see, this corner piece right here at the corner of Gap Creek and Howell is currently zoned commercial, C-2. The remainder of the property is already zoned, R-12. Again, future land use map just shows that this is residential land use 3, which is our higher-density communities. Again, the site plan, this did go to planning commission for the rezoning request of these parcels. And planning commission did make a recommendation of approval for the DRD rezoning. I would be happy to answer any questions you may have, sir.
For the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive number 30-2020.
Sub move.
End of second.
Second.
Floor is open for discussion. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Alford?
No, based on the same reasons.
Mary, there.
Yes. Rezoning of ordinance 31-2020. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification. A property owned by Mary Green located at 551 Avon Creek Road from R-12 to RM1 Multi-Family. Mr. Mattman?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mary and counsel. This rezoning request is to rezon the property from currently R-12 to RM1. What the developer is proposing is to do an apartment complex at this site. It will also be this lower piece here, that is the next ordinance that is coming. They're just owned by two different property owners, so we wanted to make sure we had that set so it was two separate ordinances. Currently, they went to pack a few weeks ago, and what they're proposing is 292 units. They will also be required by DOT to do a traffic study. This property is already within an employment center. If you are going by Village at Pelham on West Moreland and you turn onto Avon Creek, you will go just directly across the bridge, and this is the property just to the left. At our planning commission meeting, we held our public hearing on the 22nd, and planning commission made a recommendation of approval. I'll be happy to answer any questions. We currently do not have civil plans for this project. They are just going through the process. They will also be required to go to board of zoning appeals for a special exception to allow apartments. And that's all that I have, sir, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
For the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
Sub move.
End of second.
Second.
Floor is open for discussion. Mr. Mattman, is the line closest to this side of the room, is that the airport environs?
Yes, sir, this is the airport environs. They do not plan on doing anything within the environs to trigger review.
Is this one of the pieces of property that was a part of a much, much larger development 15, 20 years ago there off of 85?
This was originally zoned PD back in, I believe it was 95. A couple of years ago, a developer came in, requested rezoned into R-12 for a subdivision. That kind of fell through. The lower piece here is where they were going to do the subdivision, and they were eventually going to buy a part of this to kind of- and they were eventually gonna buy a part of this to kinda expand on that subdivision. But they hit some granite and decided it wasn't within there. Yeah.
Others? Comments, questions, concerns? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Alper?
No.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. First reading of ordinance number thirty-two dash twenty twenty. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of property owned by Ben Dillard located at five thirty-one Amherst Creek Road from R twelve to RM one. Mr. McManahan?
Yes, sir. This is the piece just to the south of the previous ordinance. It's this area right here. As you see, this property right here is zone C three. This is owned by Village of, or Spartanburg Regional. Right here to the north is DRD. That is the ledges. It's in another apartment complex on the property. Um, again, this is for the apartment complex. They're gonna combine the two properties. I believe a portion of this will stay a single-family residence. I believe they're looking at drawing the line up this way to keep that top piece just a little bit separate. But they are gonna plan on combining these two properties to create that apartment complex. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have, sir.
For the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive. So moved. And I'll need a second.
Second.
Floor is open for discussion.
Questions or comments? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Alper?
No.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. First reading of ordinance number thirty-three dash twenty twenty. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification. A property owned by Deanna Rogers located at twenty-nine, twenty-four Brushy Creek Road from DRD to R twelve single-family. Mr. McManahan?
Yes, sir. This single parcel here was zoned DRD and annexed into the city back in two thousand and sixteen. It was gonna be a part of a townhome community of roughly fifty-two townhomes. Since that time, the developer has sold off the land and subdivided it. Um, the applicant tonight is wishing to build a single-family house on the property, and that is the request for the R twelve. This had a public hearing on June twenty-second, and Planning Commission made a recommendation to approve the R twelve zoning request. Be happy to answer any questions y'all may have.
For the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
Second.
Floor is open for discussion. I will, um, apologize. It is typically in a first, it is typical in a first reading that I ask if the owner of the property, representative of the owner of the property with, is with us this evening. Uh, if in the event, um, I have overlooked you in the first reading of, um, ordinance twenty-nine, twenty twenty, thirty, twenty twenty, thirty-one, twenty, thirty-two, twenty, or thirty-three, twenty twenty, I apologize. But I will start here at ordinance number thirty-three, twenty twenty. Uh, by show of hand, is the owner of the property or representative of the owner of the property with us this evening? By show of hand, is the owner of the property or, uh, representative of any of the properties that we have proceeded to take a vote on with us this evening?
Thank you.
Excuse me?
Thank you.
Okay. Um, I'm sorry. We generally engage them on, uh, on first reading. Uh, thirty-three, uh, twenty twenty is, uh, before us this evening. We, uh, have a motion and a second. Floor is open for discussion. Questions or comments?
Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Alper?
No.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. First reading of ordinance number thirty-four dash twenty twenty. This is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of property owned by Red Dragonfly LLC located at one eleven Poplar Drive, excuse me, one thousand one hundred and eleven Poplar Drive Extension by one hundred percent petition, and to establish the zoning classification of R five garden, court, or patio home district where said property. I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
Second.
And a second. Floor is open for discussion. By show of hand, is the owner of the p- property or representative of the owner of the property with us this evening? Thank you, sir. And if we have questions, we'll be glad to ask you to come forward. Um, Mr. McManahan, update?
Yes, sir. As you stated, this is an annexation request of roughly five acres. Um, just to give you kind of an area where you're at, this right here is the property on Poplar. This is the Buddhist temple. That's probably the best point of reference I can kinda give that I hope everyone knows where that is. Um, this is the current zoning of the area. It's got some R fifteen. It's got I one kind of off to the side. Um, across the street, it's in the county. Those lots are rather small lots also. This is the future land use map. Um, it's kind of near an employment center, but there's also future land use too. And this is the current street view of the property. Uh, the developer is requesting to go to an R five garden slash patio home zoning for a future development. Um, that would be roughly forty-three units that would be allowed on that property because, based on the size and the, um, R five zoning requirements. A public hearing will be held for this meeting on July twentieth at Planning Commission. And that's all the information that I have. But I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have, sir.
Anything that you would wish to add to that conversation in regards to the development?
Nothing this time.
Okay, thank you. Uh, counsel, questions? Mr. McManahan, there are half a dozen, four maybe, homes across the street from this piece of property?
Across the street, it looks like one, two, three, seven across the street, sir.
Okay. And there are a little into the north of that, correct?
Yes, sir. As you go-
Okay. And those are in the city?
To the north, the majority, almost all of these are in the county. When you get a little further, closer to the apartment complex, that's when you start coming back into the city.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir. Others? Questions? Comments?
Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Alper?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Uh, we have dispensed of, uh, items J and K. We have dispensed of, Ms. Duncan, have I missed something?
That's all right.
That brings us to executive session. I'll entertain a motion. We go into executive session?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss an economic development matter pertaining to project homecoming as allowed by state statute, section thirty dash four seventy-eight five.
It comes as a motion and is in reference to second and final reading of ordinance twenty-eight, twenty twenty. I'll entertain a motion, I mean, I'll entertain a second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Alper?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Counsel, is there any other, um, items before us this evening?
Yeah, we have that one.
What the ordinance-
Gotta go back to number-
Yeah, we gotta go back. Yeah. Somebody say yes. We're gonna have the second and final reading of the ordinance, number twenty-eight dash twenty twenty. This is approving a project agreement with project homecoming, authorizing the execution and delivery of additional documents and related matters. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion in that regard?
Nope.
Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Alper?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Counsel, is there any other, um, items before us this evening?
Yeah, we have that one.
What the ordinance-
Gotta go back to number-
Yeah, we gotta go back. Yeah. Somebody say yes. We're gonna have the second and final reading of the ordinance, number twenty-eight dash twenty twenty. This is approving a project agreement with project homecoming, authorizing the execution and delivery of additional documents and related matters. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion in that regard?